I'd like to call to order the City Council Accessory Agency to Redevelopment Agency Meeting of April 10, 2017. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Okay. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Anyone else? Okay, moving on. A report from closed session. Mr. Rubens?
There is no report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the next item we have is presentations. We have a present to present a proclamation to the Rotary Foundation for their 100-year anniversary. So, Jeanette, let me come around here. Done? Any organization that lasts 100 years is pretty amazing. Why don't we step over here? The Rotary Foundation, 100 years old, started in 1917 by a gentleman named Arch C. Clumpf as an endowment fund for Rotary to do good in the world. And the, I guess the endowment now has grown to $4 billion in this fund. And over the years, they've provided over almost that much in grants in the last 100 years: fighting disease, clean water, health care for mothers, supporting education, local economies. Of course, for us, the Rotary's involved in what, caring cupboard, also in scholarships and a number of things in this city that help all kinds of folks, from young people all the way to seniors. And I guess, I just want to, 1.2 million members of Rotary in 200 countries, and there are right now 42 Rotary Clubs serving the counties of Marin, San Francisco, and San Mateo, consisting of nearly 2,000 members who do good every year. So, again, I didn't say whereas on all this, but that's basically what it says, and I want to present this to you, and congratulations on 100 years of great, great service to the community. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I would. One thing it doesn't mention in here, I guess, is that the one big thing that Rotary has done is contributed to the stopping polio. And they've worked with the World Health Organization and the Bill Gates Foundation and been a huge contributor. And there's been only about two to four cases of polio in the world this year. So, it's almost stopped.
Congratulations again, and thank you very much for all the work you do, especially around here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item we have is public comment. Public comment is on items that are not on the posted agenda, and I have two speaker cards. So, the first one is Ken Castle.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak on the action that you started in January to have a review of the tree ordinance. I'd like to encourage you to expedite that process. I've noticing that around my neighborhood, the removal of trees that are below the permit threshold has accelerated, as we see more and more renovation and more and more new people moving in that are looking to have bigger lots or bigger properties. They're inclined to look at our very weak ordinance and make moves on removing trees. I had three redwoods removed from the next-door neighbor to my house about two weeks ago. One of the things I'd like to call to your attention, I know this is understudied by the city staff, with the possibility of bringing in a proposal for a consultant. One of the things that you might want to look at is that the county is undergoing a very, very extensive review of its tree ordinance policies. They formed a very large steering committee that consists of environmental groups, of a number of arborists, and many county staff from different departments. They've been meeting since October. They're looking to have some kind of a final plan by May. They have engaged in best-practice research with other cities, notably Palo Alto and Menlo Park, who have been providing some feedback on their policies, and they're taking a look at city ordinances up and down the peninsula, as well as over in the coast. Obviously, their venue is the unincorporated areas, and they know that the cities might have a little bit of a different requirement or interest. One of the things that the County Board of Supervisors did in October was to pass an emergency ordinance increasing penalties for unauthorized tree removal, and they're rather significant, and I thought that was an interesting move, pending the adoption of a full plan. One of the things that everybody should be aware of is that tree trimming is an issue of major consumer concern because of unlicensed contractors, everything from illegal removal of trees to companies that have no contractor's license, who in addition don't know what they're doing, possibly might be submitting the owners that hire them to possible insurance repercussions, because your homeowner's insurance does not cover you if you have an unlicensed person or a nonlicensed contractor who has an accident. So, I would urge you to expedite this matter of deliberation, even if it means having an interim solution of some sort. I was shocked when I saw in the city ordinance that redwood trees of less than 72 inches of diameter do not need a permit for removal. Absolutely shocked. I don't know of another city in the county that has that type of laxity in terms of tree removal, of redwoods in particular. So, again, I would encourage you to look at the county planning. They have actually a 25-page document on what arborists should do when they're making reports. I guarantee that the arborist that made the report on the ruby tree of one paragraph would not pass muster in this new requirement that the county is looking at. So, I know you have a lot of tree issues to consider, eucalyptus trees on San Carlos Avenue, as well as our heritage oaks and other trees, and so rather than reinvent the wheel and hire an expensive consultant, you might find a lot of good information by engaging in this discussion with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. The next speaker is Tom Davids.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is your periodic chamber update. I'd like to inform you of three activities this month that you might like to be a part of and interested public as well. The first is May 4. We have a joint meeting with the San Mateo Chamber. We call it a Business Expo. This will be at the brewery, Devil's Canyon Brewery, from 5:00 to 8:00, and there will be 50 chamber members showing their wares and talking about what they do. So, that'll be an interesting event. On May 5, Access San Carlos is being held again. Jackie Spear will be the speaker. This is 7:45 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and there sure to be a large crowd, so get your reservation in early. And then finally, we have a joint mixer with Redwood City on May 17 at Domenico's Winery, and this is another chance to get together with your businesspeople and those around us in Redwood City. And that's it. So hopefully you can join us in these events.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate the update. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in public comment on items not on the posted agenda? Okay, thank you. All right. Next item we have is consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine or elected enacted by one motion, and we know separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items be removed for separate action. Do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Go right ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Olbert.
I just said move approval.
Sorry. Second. All right. Moved in second to approve the items. Any discussion? Harry Nunn, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Reports to council. Reports are updates, and we're not going to be deciding anything on this. There's no action taken on these items. We have three this evening. The first one is on Wheeler Plaza parking in construction. Mr. Seve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Before I begin, I'd like to make just a few introductions. We have some folks in the audience that may assist me in answering any questions from the mayor and council. We have Ray Panic and Henry Wang from KB Home, and we also have Steve Mooney from So in terms of work to date, the building and demolition has been completed of the buildings at Wheeler Plaza, including the old Foodville Building, the retail shops along San Carlos Avenue, and the apartment at Walnut Street. All the underground utility work has been completed by the developer, and we've opened the valet-assist parking lot at the old Foodville Building. And as you know, the project timeline has moved a number of times as we presented this to the City Council, and we hope that tomorrow, construction will begin in earnest. And it's been a very rainy season, but we believe things are going to be able to move forward. So you'll start to see construction activity out at the site, starting tomorrow. In terms of the parking, Samtrans parking garage was open back in November, and it was good, because it allowed us some time to iron any bugs out of the system there, and we've had a lot of feedback over the last few months. We have a team in place that meets regularly to talk about changes that need to be made and how operations are going, and our coordination with Samtrans. So, things have been going pretty well. It's three-hour parking. There's two valet-assist staff. We started with one on the ground floor, and then another was added at the upper floor to make sure that people get into spots. You have the assist is available Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and it's open for self-parking on nights and weekends, and all-day free parking for downtown employee permit holders and Samtrans employees. That's very important. We encourage all the employees in the downtown to park in this location, and you can do that for free if you have a permit. In terms of the interim parking, as you may have seen, the Foodville lot is now open for parking, and we've got a valet attendant out there, and it's open Sunday to Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Thursday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and you can self-park on the hours that aren't staffed by valet-assist. In terms of additional employee permit parking, as you can see on the map, the right part of that map there where it says the Arroyo Parking Lot, that'll be open in mid-April, mid to late April for construction parking, but also for downtown employees if this is more convenient for those folks to park in that location. So employees can park at either the Samtrans parking garage or at the Arroyo Street parking lot. You'll see, you've seen new directional signage all around town in the vicinity of Wheeler Plaza, and we're, we do get comments on these, and we try and make adjustments as things go forward. There's also informational signage. I know that the council was very, very interested in this, and there's a number of different signs around the site talking about what Wheeler Plaza is and contact information. In terms of construction staging, what you'll see out at the site now is on Walnut Street at the bottom of your screen in the blue there, that parking lane has been closed off, and you'll see a large trailer, a construction trailer, that will be there for the duration of construction. And the site is now almost all fenced off, and Sister City Alley will remain open from Cherry to Laurel Street. We've had a lot of public outreach on this project. We've sent things out to the community, spotlight San Carlos, letters to downtown property owners. We've met with property owners. We keep a couple of different websites that I'll talk about, and we have all our signs in the downtown. Most recently, we did a video about Wheeler Plaza just in the last couple of weeks. It's been on social media and in the city's website. We also sent it out to a number of different publication and TV networks, and the city manager did a press release, and I see the mayor is quoted in the city manager's press release there as well. In terms of the developer's website, it's another good place for information, and you can connect to that, and it, there's a Stay Informed button, and you can enroll in updates as you can on the city's websites with e-notify as well. We have a number of different people that can be contacted if you have any questions or concerns. Lisa Costa-Sanders is our city planner that's engaged with the project on a regular basis. Dolores Montenegro is our troubleshooter for construction. She's been great out there. And Laura Tuchel is public relations for the developer KB Home. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available, and so are the other folks to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from this?
Yes.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. Nice presentation. Couple of, just quick questions. The, I think you called it the employee parking area. Is that actually technically part of what is eventually going to become the Transit Center multimodal parking area, or is that specially built for the project?
That, this is parking that's south of there, south of Arroyo, so it's not part of the Transit Center.
Oh, okay, so it was-
It is Samtrans property, but not part of that new Transit Center.
And remind me, who paid for, to construct that?
The developer KB Homes.
The other question I had actually relates to an element of the project a little bit further down the road. Once the revised Transit Center gets built and opened and the Cherry Street access is done, I've been getting a lot of feedback from people downtown about how they would dearly love to see a four-way stop sign at Cherry Street and Laurel Street, and I keep telling them, one's coming, because I think that's part of the plan. So my question is, related to the Transit Village, my question is, is it possible to actually implement that four-way stop before, you know, like now, for example, or does that violate some state rule?
You know, that's not a question that I can answer, perhaps, Jay.
Right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers Jay Walter, Public Works Director. In fact, we've been working with the developer as he's been submitting his off-site plans for other traffic improvements, such as the signal light that will be reactivated at Holly and Walnut, or, excuse me, Holly and Laurel, and a modification to the light at San Carlos Avenue in Walnut, and the four-way stop is something that we can implement very quickly.
Okay, so-
There's no rule to say we couldn't do it quickly, and it's something that we're planning to do in the very near future.
I will pass along to you that it would make a whole bunch of people very happy if you were to do that. However, Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's one other question I had. So, I don't recall hearing this before. We are turning the Holly and Laurel Street flashing light into a full-fledged light?
A fully actuated traffic light.
Okay.
At least for a couple of times until maybe it doesn't work, but go ahead.
Well, in fact-
My opinion.
Well, the question I have, because I, if, I'm sure staff had told me this, and it just slipped by me. Have you studied the traffic flows through there? Because the presence of particularly the restaurant on the corner of El Camino and Laurel Street at certain times of the day, that traffic gets totally backed up, and if you have a stoplight there, that's probably going to aggravate that.
Well, the plan for timing that signal is going to be on what we consider to be a half-cycle with the El Camino full cycle. So as traffic would be released coming east, or, excuse me, westbound underneath the railroad tracks across El Camino, they'll be proceeding through and seeing a green light when they get to that signal at Laurel. And so in theory, we think that's going to clean that out a little bit better each time, and it won't be the regular, everybody has to wait for the four-way stop to be, you know, flushed through with all the cars.
Okay. We can talk about this offline. The issue I'm talking about is actually not caused by, is not traffic backup caused by the flashing light or the full light that you're going to have there. It's the restaurant there. It's before you even get to the light. Traffic actually backs up across El Camino on occasion.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, El Torino, I think it is.
You're right. That's a difficult place to have a restaurant, quite honestly.
And I just hope that that's been factored into our plans for the timing of the light and setting up the light and whatnot.
Well, again, my point in terms of that light at Holly and Laurel would be, there will be, I think, more gaps as a result of that light being in place rather than fewer gaps, because right now, the presence of just a stop sign allows traffic to flow through it, stop, go, move forward, move forward. So it's, it'll be a different type of traffic flow, but I think it'll be better from a gap standpoint.
Let's talk offline, because you've got to explain that to me.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Al, could you go back to the big red sign? So I love this sign. Thank you for doing this. This is great. I also think, you know, the free public parking signs are good. Can you go back a couple slides to the gentleman standing in the Samtrans garage? So this is where I have a little bit of concerns, which is that when you go down Walnut, it's not exactly obvious where to turn, and so you have this big gigantic sign, which makes you, at least as a driver, makes me feel like I'm going to get a big sign that's going to tell me where to turn, but if, there's like a little kind of makeshift sign that makes it feel a little fly-by-night. It's also this kind of branded, you know, parking assistance, which makes me feel like I have to pay. That's just my personal reaction to it. I just would be highly sensitive, since we're putting a lot of our eggs in the Samtrans garage basket, that people know where to make that turn, and that they know, you know, I'm not supposed to go down into the Samtrans underground garage, I'm supposed to go down this little alley and then, so, you know, if it was me, I would put a pole with the free parking thing on Walnut that points, so that people have more of a contiguous directional, but you guys can decide, but I, I'm concerned about that, just connecting that last piece, making sure people know where to go. I don't know if you had any response to that?
Thank you very much for that, and we've talked a lot about that sign. It's moved around a lot, and I agree. So we'll take a look at that.
Okay. And then, you know, as I said, I think it was late last year, like, I appreciate all the work that's been done, like, we're, we're as well set up for success as we can be, but I think it may be a little painful for all of us and for our town. I would love to see Dolores at these meetings, since she's going to be the face of this. I hope that she can come to the next update. I wanted to ask you when the next update is, but I would really love to hear from her, since she's the person that we're telling people to call.
Sure. We will ask her to attend. And we'd like to do these every few months, is pretty much, we've been doing them quarterly, essentially, is what we do.
Okay. I think it may be good to do the next one. I think quarterly is probably fine once we get going, but it may be good to do the next one relatively quickly, since we're going to see the big, every, the whole city's going to have to go through a learning curve really quickly and some growing pains, and I'd like to know kind of what we're hearing, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. Al, a couple things. Well, actually, the first one's just a Jay. I want to add my support to what Mark said about adding the stop sign at Cherry and Laurel sooner rather than later. And once that happens, I'm going to take a picture of it, and I'm going to send it down to Sally Mitchell, because she and I used to argue about that all the time. The other question I have, Al, is on the valet parking, and maybe I've misinterpreted this all along. My impression of valet parking was that if once the lot where Foodville was, was full, that a person would take your car for you and park it over at the Samtrans garage. Is that not true?
I want to have Sam, or Steve Mooney from M-Park trying to answer that question.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Steve Mooney with Imperial Parking, M-Park, partnering with KB Home and the city on this project. To answer your question, we looked early on at the possibility of providing a valet service from the Foodville site to the Samtrans garage. Unfortunately, we thought there would be a great deal of service breakdowns and delays in that. It would take a lot of labor, not to mention the on-street liability, shuttling cars back and forth a matter of five to 10 blocks. So that idea was kind of curbed early on with the intent of providing an experience for the customers and the downtown members without any service breakdowns or delays.
Is it your, obviously you've been doing this for a while. I mean, is your experience that people would prefer to drive their own car over to the other park, or is there an expectation? I mean, when I see the word valet, I have this expectation that someone's going to take my car and give me a ticket for it, and when I come back, I'm going to give them that, and they're going to go get my car.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering, what is the expectation? I mean, you've, I guess you've been out there, there's been people out there, have they been asking you about this, or do they have the expectation that they are going to drive their car over? And maybe I've just misinterpreted it.
Yeah, I think the expectation, and we've, you know, trained our team on this, and I think given several updates on this, and the signage program was designed to get people from the Foodville site to the Samtrans garage. In addition, we're customer service ambassadors to tell them that, you know, the Foodville lot's full, this is how you get to the Samtrans garage. When you arrive there, we'll have a guy downstairs, a guy or gal, and another one upstairs to assist you with your parking. And yes, we do feel that the majority of people would rather self-park their cars, in our experience.
So are they going to, they're going to pull in the alleyway there, because obviously they won't be able to drive out on Walnut, because that's all going to be fenced off.
Correct.
At what point do you intercept them and say, okay, our lot's full, so you need to go over and park at the Samtrans?
As soon as they pull into our garage, or as soon as they come to the ingress area of our garage, we're going to approach them and give them directions.
Mr. Mooney, I think he was interpreting it. We're talking about the temporary, the 50 spots is what he's talking about.
Correct, on Laurel Street.
On Laurel Street. There's no garage on Laurel Street.
Correct, sorry. I was thinking of the lot.
Yes, I knew you were. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The idea is to approach them immediately when they come on the alley, or when they're turning off of Laurel Street to the Foodville site, and let them know that we're full. Please take a ride on Laurel, a ride on Cherry, a ride on Walnut, follow the sign that we may have to replace into the Samtrans garage.
Okay. All right. That's what I was after. Thank you.
I'm going to let you talk in a second, but I'm going to follow up on that while you're here. So you're driving in, I know, I can hear this bus coming. I drive into that thing. Is there a way to make a U-turn? Because I'm going to have to make a U-turn, because I can't go out, you know, off your, off this. I can't go this way, or can I? Is it going to be a two-way, the green, or is it going to be one-way? The alleyway? The alleyway? The green alleyway?
Can you go to Cherry?
I don't think, I mean, right now, you can't go that way, because it, all the cars are, you know, it's a one-way.
Trying to find the site map.
Right there. So right now, before there's any construction, you can only come in from Cherry Street and go one-way. You can't go two ways. So, as Mr. Mooney said, I'm driving south on Laurel Street, and I pull into the, right by the blue line pizza. What am I going to do? I'm, now, can I make a U-turn, or where am I going to turn, or how am I going to get out? See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Or can I, now, can I continue and go, is it going to be a two-way? Can I, all right, then I'll just go back down on Cherry Street and go to Walnut? Or is it going to be a two-way? That's my question.
I think that's going to be a one-way.
Excuse me, Mr. Mooney, could you speak to the mic? I'm sorry.
Yeah. I believe in, maybe, Henry might be able to chip in, but I think that alley is going to be a one-way, so we will need to have-
From Cherry?
From Cherry to the lot will be one-way, correct?
Right, okay. So then, is there a U-turn, is there, are we going to, how's the car going to, is there space to make a U-turn in there, or how are we going to do that?
There will be space for a U-turn.
Okay, great. As long as there's space for a U-turn, because that's what, I'm saying, at least half, I'd say half, maybe not half, but a certain percentage, 25, 30% of the cars, are going to go in south on Laurel Street. And which are really, you know, I mean, the big sign is, the big thing is, of course, to have the big sign way out front, because they don't even turn in if it's full.
We have lot-full signs that can address that, and we can put that sign out there and then also stage our guy there.
Because then nobody would have to turn into it, either coming north or south on Laurel. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that?
Yeah, sir.
I just want to finish up with this. So that, the green area there, they, during construction, they'll still be able to drive on that, on that alleyway?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gocott?
Boy, I guess I'm a little confused on this parking thing. Maybe I should ask the easier question. I was going to ask Laura if we can plant corn where we've got the grass right now. Oh, miniature golf, okay. Sorry. So a couple things, mostly just, I wasn't going to ask any questions, but after hearing everybody's comments, I have a few things.
We're going to get called, so that's why we're asking questions. We're going to get asked, so we've got nothing to answer.
Yeah, exactly. That's true. Regarding doing quarterly, the answer you gave, Mr. Johnson, it came to mind that, similar to what Cameron said, but I'll put it a little differently, like in construction, you have what are called draws, right? So as you're going along in construction, you get to a certain point, the contractor asks for a draw payment, and those are certain landmarks. And those are certain landmarks. And it seems to me that's how some of these updates ought to be, that they would come in advance of that landmark. So, you know, if we're going to start, say, framing, and the contractor's going to have a lot of lumber out there, and he's going to want to stage that in a certain area, and it's going to interrupt traffic on Walnut Street. I don't know if that's going to happen, but it could. So, staying in close contact with the developer slash contractor, to know what those landmark things are, I'm sure Mr. Valet could help you in the awareness of some of that. And then, having updates to the council, really to the public, to say, "This is going to be going on, the contractor's notified us of this, we're going to expect this kind of interruption in two, three weeks." That's not going to be a perfect thing, I'm sure. You know, there'll be things that happen, where we'll get caught off guard. But as much as it could, I think that might be helpful, in addition to, or in lieu of, in some cases, I guess, of the quarterlies. That's...
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay. The second comment I had was about valet parking, and I'm not sure about that, using that terminology, because I agree with Mr. Collins, it sends the message that you can pull into the lot, someone will take over your car, you're free to go to the restaurant or wherever you're going, and come back and, you know, "Here's my ticket, go get my car." And that's not what's happening. It's... What's happening is more direction-assisted parking, sounds to me like. So...
Steve?
While they're deciding who's going to come up, my memory of it, or my impression of it, I guess, when we had that in front of the council, I thought what we were approving, and Mr. Collins and I had a discussion about this downtown, I thought we were approving actual valet parking. And I could be totally off-base with that, but that's what I thought we were doing at the time. And like I said, it sounds to me more like what we're doing is direction-assisted parking.
I mean, I can talk a little bit about that. Early on, we did, as Steve mentioned earlier, they did look at valet parking, you know, the traditional kind where you give the keys. But what we heard is that the feedback is that people want to keep control of their vehicles, because you have a lot of stuff in your car, some people use it as an office, and you've got your gear, and people wanted that privacy, and they wanted security of knowing that they would have control of that. And so, that was one of the things that I think that we were... We heard and that InPark understood. But I'm going to let Steve add to that, if you would like, yeah.
So, we are arranging this lot in a manner where we'll call it a valet-assist lot, a valet-assist lot, meaning when the lot fills up with the self-parking stalls, we are prepared to valet-park cars in that lot as well.
But not Samtrans?
Not Samtrans. From what we understand, Samtrans isn't designed to have more cars parked on the floors, based on its structure, zoneage.
So, what I'm hearing there is, with valet parking within that lot, you can fit more cars, but once that lot is full...
Valet goes away.
Valet goes away. Okay. I get it. All right. And then, the last comment I had, or question, is, of course, you went through this thing with Mr. Grisilli about if somebody pulls in, how do they... And the lot is full, you're not allowed to do a U-turn on Laurel Street. That's news to a lot of people, but...
Yeah.
But Mr. Grisilli's right, you end up... So, now you're going to go down Laurel until you get to Cherry?
Correct.
Is this the direction we're giving? And then, down Walnut until you get to the garage?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that does away with the question I had, because I... You know, the thing I was thinking is, might it make more sense for Samtrans to, at least during the construction, you know, that's a one-way? So, it comes off of Walnut, and they go straight through and under the thing, and then you either go in the garage, or you get spit back out onto Laurel Street. But if it were the other way, and people could enter off of Laurel Street, because the garage is right there, you can see it, you know? And it's a little unfortunate, the way they have that set up. It's probably great for their employees and other people, but who know about it. But if you don't know, you know, and you see this garage, your immediate reaction is, "Oh, there's where I'm supposed to go," right? But from what you're saying, and the direction that people would be given, I guess it does make sense for them to still enter on...
Walnut.
Off of Walnut. Yeah, okay. But, and I agree with Cameron, when you get there, and there's just this little rinky-dink sign that sometimes has gotten blown over with the storms we've had, there's a little bit of a problem there.
We'll definitely look at finding a permanent solution, a larger sign for that location.
Something, yeah.
As it was mentioned earlier, we had a couple different locations for that sign, it's confused some of the people, so I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Just a second. Mr. Albert, then, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. One is, listening to the discussion that the mayor started about the U-turn in the parking lot area, it occurred to me, the flow design that you guys have come up with, have you actually gone out and tested it? You know, gotten several people in cars and said, "Okay, let's see what happens if we try to do U-turns in here while there's another car coming in behind to go to the lot." Have we actually done that?
I've done it myself.
With multiple cars?
No, just myself. And, you know, I think people are actually using both spots now, so, I mean, we can still do that kind of testing, but it's being used now, so we can kind of judge based on the actual usage. I think we can check in with some folks out there, too.
Fair enough. I see that. That might... I would strongly encourage us to do that, in case there is an issue that will show up, so we can try and nip it in the bud. And I just want to add my concerns to something I heard voiced from the dais a few minutes ago. The term valet parking, I think, means a very particular thing to people. And I understand what we're doing, now that you've explained it, it's not at all what I would have thought of as valet parking. It's not what I thought we were originally approving. So, I would again also suggest that you come up with a contingency plan for what you're going to have to do, what you may have to do if it turns out that there's a lot of people who show up going, "Well, here's my car, take care of it." And, "No, sorry, you have to go park in the garage." Like, no, that's not what I expect to do, because we don't necessarily... It's a... You know, it's a relatively trivial problem, it's the kind of thing that gets people annoyed, and we'd kind of like to minimize that.
Mr. Johnson?
So, just one quick comment, which is that the parking tendents are, in many ways, our public relations on Wheeler Plaza these days. You know, I had, which I... Not a great experience with parking attendant. This was a couple of months ago, it was very early days where, and I shared this with staff, where I went into Samtrans Garage, and I said, "Hey, is there free public parking here?" And they said, "No." And they gave me a little slip, and they said, "This is Samtrans parking." Anyway, I know that was very early, but I tried to engage the gentleman, he had no idea what I was talking about. And then, this past weekend, I was downtown, and I parked in the new parking lot on Laurel, and as I was parking, I heard a couple people ask the attendant, you know, "What are they doing here?" Like, they were just curious, they didn't really understand what the project was. So, I think it would be important to make sure that the parking tendents have a couple talking points, where they can explain what it is, how long the project's going to take, the fact that it's going to result in a new parking garage, or just a few things, because I suspect that they're going to get many, many, many questions about this, and I want to make sure that, you know, we're giving accurate information to people.
And I just had one last question. How many parking spaces are there in Samtrans that we can use?
I believe approximately 50-plus parking spaces up on the top.
Okay, so, in effect, just so everybody understands, we had 185. I would assume some of those were employee or parking, so let's say 104... I'll give it, say, 140. So, we're going to have 50 and 50, so we're going to be short 40 right off the get-go.
Well, there's the employee parking along south of Arroyo as well, so...
No, no, you're not... I guess I'm not seeing it. There's 185 spots in Wheeler Plaza. I assume 45 of them are employees, throw them out. They're going to Arroyo. It's 140 spots. We've got 50 where Foodville is, and you're telling me there's 50 in Samtrans? So, we're short 40.
Sorry. Busy times in Samtrans Garage, there's about 85 to 95 spaces available.
Okay. That's just... I was hopeful that it would be close. I mean, it wasn't... Okay, thank you.
We've been studying it since November.
That's fine. I'm just trying to... It's not ever going to be exactly the same, but I'm just trying to make it hopefully that it was close, okay?
And, Mr. Mayor, can I ask one clarifying question? So, the employee permit parking that is in Clark Plaza, has that been opened up to general public as well?
It will be.
Tomorrow?
This week.
This week, okay. And that's a couple dozen more spots, I...
About, yeah, 20, what, 20 to 30, something like that?
At least 30.
30, yeah, 30-ish.
Thanks.
Okay. Great. Mr. Grokot, last question?
Last question. I noticed, or just have always noted, that when we do the farmer's market, the vendors tend to park with their vans and stuff on the perimeter of Wheeler Plaza, and they won't be able to do that. So, has there been any communication with the vendors of what they're supposed to do and how they handle that?
That's the chamber, the chambers... We talk to the chamber quite often about this, they're highly aware of the parking situation downtown, and so, we'll check back in with the vent... The chamber, to make sure that they convey what's going on. Yeah.
Great. By the way, thank you very much for your patience, but there's a lot of questions that are going to be asked, but they're not going to ask you, or you, or you, they're going to ask us. And we want to know the answers, and so that's why we're sort of pressing on this. But I know you guys have got plans, and you're professionals, so I know you know how to do it. But that's... I just want to make sure you understand, that's why we're going here, because this is the biggest lot in town, and it's going away, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One quick... Apropos of your discussions that you've been having with the chamber, please make sure that they are not planning on using some of the other parking spaces. I mean, in other words, that could be their solution, they need to be advised that that's not going to work.
Thank you, Al, very much. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. AP, report to council on state of the streets. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight, we'll be talking to you, like we have usually every couple of years, come back with sort of state of the streets. What's happening in San Carlos as far as pavement performance, and, you know, what are some of the typical issues that we face? And then, at the end of our time, I'll provide you a little bit of information on the recently signed legislation for transportation funding, which provides us a little bit more. But for now, I'll turn this to Grace Lee, City Engineer, and she'll be doing the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Grace Lee, City Engineer. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, manages and maintains the Street Saver Program. This software program organizes and analyzes information about the pavement condition. It can also uniformly document street conditions and needs, provides budgeting and reporting capabilities, and provide cost-effective maintenance strategies for staff. The city uses that information to formulate our annual street resurfacing projects. Each segment of the city street is assigned a pavement condition index, a PCI. PCI is a numerical index between 0 and 100 that describes the condition of the pavement. 90 to 100 is an excellent-conditioned street, usually a new street. 70 to 89 is very good. 50 to 69 is good. 25 to 49 is poor, and 0 to 24 is very poor or failed street. MTC uses these pavement distress types to categorize the severity and the type of distresses on each segment to come up with the PCI. Some of the pavement distress types include the alligator cracking, which you see in the upper right-hand corner, and block cracking is on the lower right-hand corner. Longitudinal cracking is one long line of crack, and that's on your lower left-hand corner. Redding and depression is shown on your upper right, distortion on your lower right. And previously, MTC had weathering and ravelling as one distress type, but they've recently made a change to their rating system, and they've separated those two out. What this does to the PCI is that PCI can vary between plus or minus three points, and I'll talk more about that in later slides. The weathering is defined as loss of fine aggregate, which is shown on your lower left, and ravelling is the picture next to it, which is loss of coarse aggregate. The idea behind preventive maintenance is to treat pavement before the steep decline. The curve you see in front of you is a typical pavement condition lifecycle. The pavement, when it's new, it gradually declines to a certain point. After a certain point, and this is shown as about 15 years, it would start to turn into a steep decline. So, for preventive maintenance, the key is to catch it before that point and bring it back to good condition, so that we don't have to have costly future repair costs for the steep decline. Some of the maintenance treatments, based on the condition of the pavement, is excellent, you can afford to do nothing, very good, you'd be just doing crack sealing and the surface slurry seal. For good pavement, you'll still have certain locations where you'd want to do digouts, and you'd want to do some cape seal. For poor-conditioned pavements, you'd be spending a lot more money in terms of having a thick overlay with a lot of digouts. And very poor, it would be a total reconstruction of the pavement section, and that's very costly. We do do a fair amount of pothole patching, especially this past winter, where we had a lot of rain. Water intrusion causes more potholes, but this pothole patching is a temporary repair, it's not considered a preventive maintenance, but it's necessary to keep the safety of the street. An effective pavement repair tool is crack sealing, slurry seal, which I mentioned. These are for good-conditioned pavements, and you're just doing basically a surface seal to maintain the condition. Cape seal is a combination of a chip seal with a slurry seal on top. The chip seal gives it more of a structural support. Micro-surfacing is a special mix of polymer-modified asphalt. It is more expensive, it does give it more of a... The pavement more of a structural support, a little more costly as well. Then, you would look into the most costly, which I said, the reconstruction or the thick overlay, and that's redoing the whole pavement section from base to asphalt. The city, we laid out a five-year plan for our pavement plan. We have street segments already picked out for each year, and that's so that we can coordinate utility projects such as sewer projects or storm projects, so we don't end up digging up the streets right after we pave it. A look at our street network. For the city, we have about 37%, that's residential local street, 12.5%, that's Collector Street, and 15.6% that's arterial. Our PCI for 2016. For arterials, our PCI is 77, Collector 63, residential local 61, and an average of the all... The total citywide is 65. 65 is considered a good condition. Looking at historically where we've been at, we've been hovering around 60, and you see that our current index is 65, and that's partly because of the rating system change that I talked about, the weathering and ravelling. That can contribute to three points, so really, we're 62 compared to the others. But we're hovering around, hovering around the good area. And comparing to our neighbors, we are about the lower mid-area compared to our neighbors. This chart shows the correlation between PCI and annual funding levels. So with a current PCI of 65, if we were to spend no money at all on the pavement, in five years, in 2021, our PCI will fall down to 55. With a, with, in order to maintain a PCI of 65, we would need at least 1.9 million annually to spend on our pavement projects. With a $90,000 budget, we're expected to have a slight decline in our PCI to 61 in 2021. And it'll take 3.1 million annual budget to increase 5% of PCI, so 65 to 70. And 10.5, or is it 10.6? 10.6 million to bring our PCI up from 65 to 85 in 2021. So the takeaway in this slide is we need to at least spend 1.9 million annually to, in order to maintain our PCI of 65. Traditionally, or historically, gas tax has been our main funding source for pavement projects. And Jay mentioned earlier he has more information about the recently passed bills that will increase gas tax for the city. And highway users' taxes also varies with the sale of gasoline, and it's the federal version of the gas tax. We, in the past, we've consistently had to use general fund to subsidize or support pavement projects. And with a, you know, 1.9 million annual need, most likely, we'll still need general fund support. Rubberized asphalt grants are not as attractive because from our experience, the cost of the rubberized, using the rubberized material isn't covered by the grant. So we're basically paying more to use that material. And we always look for federal funding as much as possible. Recently, we've been granted a, one Bay Area grant, about $550,000 for a pavement project. And that's going to be programmed in the fiscal year 1718 program. And I can answer any questions.
Mr. Walter, did you want to comment on those other items before we get to questions? Thank you, Grace, by the way. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. So just as a, information for the council last week, the legislature passed the transportation funding bill that was put before both houses. And essentially, what it did was, for local streets and roads, it provided $15 billion over 10 years for local street and road maintenance. So when you look at that, 1.5 billion per year. And for the city of San Carlos, our typical amount that we had been receiving from gas tax, state gas tax, had been somewhere in the range of about $600,000 per year. And so we'll be in line to receive about 1.1, maybe 1.2 million per year once this is fully in effect. So the way that the legislation is timed, it will go into effect at least partially in the 2017-18 fiscal year. So we'll have a slight increase in our gas tax revenue in this upcoming fiscal year. And then we'll fully realize the amounts starting in the 1819 fiscal year. So it'll be a healthy infusion for San Carlos. Of course, it is something that is going to be paid for by several new taxes. And it's something which, controversial as it may be, certainly, when you look at the picture of local street and road needs, it's something that, from a public works perspective, we're glad that it's finally gotten done. And then, and again, from a San Carlos perspective, it certainly helps us, because as Grace pointed out, we do have a pretty high need when it comes to trying to keep that PCI at about the same level, much more so than what we currently have been budgeting for, especially in the past years. So we've been trying to gather federal money that we can from grants, and using the state money, and then some infusion from general fund to try to keep our pavement as whole as we can. So that's kind of the basic for the legislation that's been passed. But there was a big effort statewide to kind of finally get that passed after about at least three, four years' worth of trying, so.
Okay, thank you. So a number of questions. Mr. Johnson, we'll start with you.
Thanks, Jay, thanks, Grace. Could you go back to the slide that is, breaks it out by type of road, the arterials, collectors, residential, local? So when I look at this, it's like the arterials are actually very good. My guess is that they degrade faster. Is that right?
The main reason is federal funding usually targets arterial streets. So those are more eligible for grant funding than local streets.
I guess my broader question is, when you guys project out the decline of the overall PCI, does it factor into the idea that, you know, our arterial streets, which gets the most wear and tear, are actually quite good today? Or are you just looking at, from a point estimate, of average PCI across the whole city and the way it degrades over time? My question is, is like, are we, are we overinflating? Like, my, the street in front of my house, which was paved last year, which, and this is just anecdotally, from my perspective, it didn't need to be paved. It gets very little wear and tear. And yes, it may degrade very, very, very slowly over time, but there's very few cars that go down it. If it's a 61, it doesn't seem like it has that much. The steepness of your curve doesn't seem that great. Whereas if it's, you know, Holly, or industrial, or Old County Road, or something like that, I can imagine that, yeah, it's degrading faster. So am I thinking about this in the right way?
Yeah, I mean, wear and tear obviously factors into it, too. And then the key is to catch it before that steep decline. And it varies between, you know, depending on usage on it as well. It's not just, it's not just the years of it. So you're right, that curve that I show you wouldn't just be a year. That's a typical pavement. But if something like Holly would probably accelerate faster, and we have to catch it before that turning point. And I think that's the trick, knowing where that turning point is.
Right. So I guess my question is, when you, when you project from the 65, are you projecting, based on a 65-point estimate? Or are you projecting on a spread, saying that, hey, the arterials are actually at 77, and the residential streets are at 61, and you're projecting off of that? And I don't know if you know the answer to that, but it seems like you would get different answers depending on how you did the analysis.
So this is done by MTC, and I believe that they average all the street segments. So they're all equal. And that's why you're, even though arterials are pretty good in 77, but because we're residential local, has dragged down the average to 65.
My guess is that, based on that, it's not as bad as you're projecting it here, and it would cost less. That would be my guess, but, you know, you guys are the experts. But I, I think probably from the average commuter in town, the driver, like, that the, everybody cares about the street in front of their house, yes. But they probably care more about the arterial streets. And if the arterial streets are in great shape, then maybe the amount of investment that's needed might be a little bit less, so.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple. You mentioned that the new gas tax money is going to bring us, we think, about 1.1 million a year. Is that on top of the 900 that we already have budgeted? So would that be 2 million? Would we be adding it to the 900 that we already budget?
So the current amount we get from gas tax revenue is about $600,000 per year. So effectively, we're doubling, we're doubling the gas tax revenue that we would get each year. So the budget of $900,000, it always has reflected either a federal grant infusion or some general fund that's put towards the street reconstruction program.
All right. And then the federal money, how much is that?
It varies. Generally, about $550,000. And it's a calculation that's done through the MTC as our regional, kind of the one who doles out the money through our nine-county Bay Area region. And it's based on population. And so that's just something that we would typically get formulaically as it would be available every couple of years.
And have you heard anything with the change in administration as to whether or not that money is going to be, is going to continue to be forthcoming?
Have heard nothing. It's been very silent compared to what's been happening at the state level as it relates to local streets and roads funding.
Is that a no news is good news, or a no news is bad news situation, in your opinion? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
At this point, actually, I'm optimistic that there will be, there will be additional funding made available for infrastructure repair. How much would actually go to local streets and roads versus what goes to bridges versus what goes to other transit or transportation needs? Hard to say at this point in time. But I know it's on the radar screen.
Thank you.
Ms. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Grace, and Jay. Just a few questions. Do you have any sense of what our PCI was back, say, in 2005? Just, I'm thinking basically before the Great Recession, when presumably we had to defer doing maintenance for a while. Ancient history, right, okay. The only other comment that I had is, I think actually the, if I was following correctly, the discussion you were having with Cameron, it's, I'm not exactly sure what the average person's view is of the relative importance of arterial streets versus the streets in front of their house. I can just say anecdotally, the only place, the only streets I ever get complaints about are people complaining about what the street in front of their house looks like. Never had anybody complain to me about the state of San Carlos Avenue or El Camino. And that may be because they're fine with it, or maybe because they think it's not our responsibility, and so there's no point in complaining about it. But I guess the question I had is, do we have any visibility into how we stack up, just comparing residential streets to residential streets with some of the other communities instead of that combined average?
Each community also has a chart, just like we have charts to separate it out. So that information can be found out.
I would be interested in seeing that just offline when you get it, because I'd like to make sure that we, you know, my metric is, I don't want to get as bad as Belmont. And I know they're working hard to try and bring themselves up, but that's sort of my bottom line, so, thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
So the first question I have is, you gave those different types of treatments that could be done. And I'm curious, it was a while ago, I think it was right around the, it was during a campaign year, I know that, where we went around and put down some tar, and I think chip seal, and did some things to certain streets. I think Howard was one of those. It was either Howard or St. Francis.
I'm guessing that's a cape seal. So that would be the chip seal. The chip seal.
Yes.
And then on top of it, it's a two-process. So chip seal first, and then we'll come back and do a slurry seal.
Correct, okay. Yeah, it was this, okay. And just a comment, you know, driving those streets seems like a waste of money because the failure starts to translate through pretty quickly. And you have to question, what did we just do here? And how much did we gain by it?
The chip is supposed to give it more of a structural base.
Right.
If you were only doing slurry seal, that's exactly what's going to happen, because it's just a surface seal.
Painting it.
Sort of like that. So you would see the structural defects coming back up. With the chip, that helps it a little more. If you were to do the crack seal first, the, I mean, it depends on how much treatment you layer on top of it. It's more effective. But then you think about the cost, and if it's worth a lot.
So do we know what we had done there? That might have been before your time as well, but I can't remember.
It sounds like it was a chip seal. And unfortunately, it sounds like the area that was chosen to be chip sealed either wasn't adequately crack sealed or repaired ahead of time. Because typically, what you'll want to do is, in an area that generally looks pretty good over several blocks, you may have some small areas of repair that you need to do, where you'll dig it out, put in some new asphalt. And then you seal the whole street. And so generally, then it'll last okay. Could be that they either missed some locations that had some repair that was really needed, or they thought they might be able to stretch the chip seal over it and make it work.
Okay. Question on this, this five-year pavement plan. And it's got these color codes. I'm not sure what we're looking at. And, oh, okay, those are years. And when we're, so we're talking about a five-year pavement plan, what type of work are we talking about doing? Do we, do we know? Or we'll get, will know when we get to it, you know?
Yeah, so that's generally, when we go to design it, we'll focus on what exact treatment we'll do. And lately, we've been doing a lot of digouts, large-area digouts with overlay, like a two-inch overlay. So that's, if the pavement's in good condition, then we just do a slurry seal or some crack seal. So it really depends on what that area, the needs are. And then it can be a combination of that project. So the color that you see is just the area we target to go and design, just so we know that. If we're going there next year, we should do all our utility digging, you know, previous to that.
But is there, so is there a comparison of data of graded streets, grading being, you know, that grading that you gave us that add up into these numbers? That's all taken into consideration?
Yeah.
And that's how you develop this plan?
Right. So in the Street Saver program, it has every segment of street in the city, and it shows the different distress type and the severity. And that gives it that index, that PCI. So when we formulate where we want to do our work, it'd be based on, well, do we want to bring this PCI up? This will help ours, or how much money? And it depends on how much money we have to spend, too. Certain ones, we would, it would be too costly to bring it up. Then we said, well, maybe later years. So that comes into play when we think about maintenance strategy. And the software itself also gives recommendations on how they think you can raise your PCI.
Raise your number, yeah, okay. And I did notice three-quarters of our road miles are the ones that are in the 61 rating, the residential streets. So that's a lot, you know, relative to total miles, right? But it does sound like with the infusion of the gas tax vehicle fee, that, and then comparing what you were talking about, how much we should be able to budget based on getting some grant money from the state on that, and what we were getting, and then where that would put our number, it sounds like we're going to be able to raise our score and take care of some things.
The, the Street Saver is telling us we need 1.9 million annually to keep our PCI. And if we're saying, yeah, to keep it. So if we're saying we're getting 1.1 from the increased gas tax, then there's still, there's stills
that we have to come up with.
That we need to think about, you know, general fund or other sources.
That's good to know, for us especially, because, and then when we go over the budget, you know, figuring that out, okay. And then my last thing is just a comment, since you guys are here and we're talking about this. There's two areas that I've noticed in town that, one is a new failure, and the other is, I don't know what the heck is up, because it's, oh, it's like an ongoing failure. And the, so the ongoing failure is when you're turning off of San Carlos Avenue onto El Camino. For some reason, that right-hand turn lane, we've always got a depression there. I don't know what's going on, but that's been that way for years. And I know we patched it, and it comes back. And I guess all that asphalt's going to China or something, you know, through a hole in the ground. And the other one is, behind Didom's, there's a big, huge pothole that's shown up right, right behind Didom's, the back corner in the plaza, in the parking plaza area. And it's, it's pretty bad, so take note of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Move on to 8C. Report to council regarding settlement agreement with PG&E. And I'm sure this is a very short one, isn't it?
I will do my best, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to report that we have a tentative settlement with PG&E arising out of the ex-party violations and the CPUC's OII investigation case that was filed in November of 2015. The, just for the members of the public, the OII was a matter filed by the CPUC to force an investigation of the ex-party communications, which ex-party means communications that are in private. And under the CPUC rules, those communications need to be, other parties to a proceeding need to be provided notice. The most pertinent emails that I was interested in as the city attorney were emails arising out of the 2013 CPUC repressurization proceeding. It turns out, after the emails were uncovered by the city of San Bruno, that many of, a stream of emails were between executive at PG&E and one of the commissioners at the CPUC on the eve of and the morning of that hearing in December of 2013. Raised a whole bunch of issues in my mind. And that was obviously part of the, part of the emails that were, that concerned the CPUC and led to the OII investigation. So the way this works is the, the, the OII instructed the interested parties to organize the data so that the CPUC could assess them and issue appropriate fines. The fine range is between $550,000. And there were hundreds of emails, so you could see that it was quite a task. It took us about a year to get through all the emails. As a result of that, the parties a year to get through all the emails. As a result of that, the parties who were interested, the interested parties, which include San Carlos, San Bruno, and some non-governmental agencies and governmental agencies, shifted to settlement negotiations in December of 2016. So as a result of all those negotiations, the parties agreed to the settlement of $86.5 million. And that $86.5 million is divided in a couple of different ways. So, next slide. So the, the first part of it, of course, is, San Carlos' general fund is, receives $6 million for the communications, that, the ones I just described a minute ago. They were extremely important to the safety of San Carlos residents and justified that part of the settlement. The city of San Bruno, for their role in bringing the ex parte violations to light, also received $6 million to its general fund. $73.5 million will be in the form of rate relief to gas customers of PG&E in the years 2018 and 2019. And then another million dollars from PG&E shareholders will go to the state's general fund. There's some non-financial remedies in the, in the settlement. In the settlement agreement, PG&E admitted to, during that timeframe from 2010 to 2014, they committed multiple violations of the ex parte rules. For two years, PG&E will be required to provide notice of meet and greets, which are their efforts to explain new facilities or other types of matters that are in the jurisdiction of the CPUC. They'll need to report those to the Safety and Enforcement Division at the CPC and repair advocacy groups. And for three years, PG&E will provide investment-related information to decision-makers. PG&E will provide communication to the CPCs and Safety and Enforcement Division and repair advocacy groups if they provide that information. And then also, for executives at PG&E, they'll require additional ex parte rules training. And that was the last slide. So I think, I think the main issue that I just wanted to impress upon for the council and the public is, the settlement really benefits the city, because if the matter went all the way to the CPUC for hearing, the current CPUC rules do not allow for payments to municipalities and government agencies. So as part of the settlement, the city of San Carlos benefited substantially by receiving this general fund payment of $6 million. And then one last thought before I take any questions. The city, since 2013, as reflected in the staff report, has spent time, effort, and money trying to protect the residents from the impact and the safety concerns about Line 147 that runs up Burton Avenue. And that amount exceeded by our estimate of over $1 million for that. And then the rest of the settlement was really to address and punish and deter conduct by PG&E similar to this in the future. So with that, I'm available for any questions from the council.
Mr. Ruben, do you have a couple of questions?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Greg. Actually, first off, congratulations on doing this, and thank you very much for your hand in getting this here. My, I had one question and one quick comment. Quick question is, has the CPUC decided on their side of the table if there's been any, I guess I would call, for lack of a better term, called disciplinary action for the commissioner who was involved in the ex parte communications?
Well, I, I don't believe there were any direct disciplinary proceedings brought, because curiously, the, the receiving of the information by the commissioner is not a violation. It's, the violation is on the regulated utilities.
That's fair.
But I think the commissioner that was involved in our case was not reappointed.
Okay. And the comment I wanted to make, just actually to the entire dais, is, I actually hope before we finalize the budget for this year, I hope we'll have the opportunity to consider what to do with the $6 million, meaning, I hope that it gets approved all the way through and signed off. I actually hope that we would have some discussion prior to getting into the budgetary discussion about how we ought to decide to use the money. And what I mean by that is, absent anything else, it'll just go into the general hopper of money coming into the city, and it gets doled out to whatever projects are there. I tend to view it as a fairly extraordinary award, at least I hope it'll be extraordinary. I'd not like to have to go through this whole thing again in order to get the $6 million, get another $6 million. And given that it's an extraordinary source of income, I think we ought to think, discuss whether or not we want to have some kind of extraordinary use for it. And that doesn't mean we should, but I'd like to have that discussion. So I, I don't know if anybody else is interested in that, but I'd love to see an agendized discussion of just, what do we do with the money?
When is our next, Mr. Malpe, when's our next retreat?
June 9th.
June 9th.
June 9th.
June 9th, according to Councilmember Collins.
Is that after we, is that after we would approve the budget?
Yeah. Well, this is a mid-cycle budget, and I, and we've got that scheduled right now for the second meeting in May. I think it's the 22nd of May.
So we'd have to somehow put this on either next time or the first meeting in May then to talk about the $6 million?
Mr. Mayor, may I offer an alternative? I, you know, I was going to suggest the idea, I'd be fine if we just, for the purposes of the budget, sort of held it in abeyance and said, we haven't decided what we're going to do with it, and then have the discussion if it makes it easier logistically to do that. I'm not trying to jump things.
Does that make some sense? Because we didn't anticipate, it's not in the budget, I assume?
Yeah, that's correct. It's, it's not in the budget, obviously, and we haven't...
We could approve the budget and then have the discussion.
You could approve the budget and have the discussion, absolutely. I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. All right. Well, then we don't have to get jammed in. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. What I'm going to do here is, I'm going to move 10A and 10B above 9, because 9 could go on for a while. So let's, let's go to 10A. Consideration of document resolution authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Maguire and Hester in the amount of $1,178, $479 for Highlands Park, et cetera, et cetera. Who's, Amy, are you reporting on this one?
Good evening, Mayor Grisilian, fellow councilmembers, Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. Let's see. So tonight, we're going to discuss the Highlands Park playground renovation and hopes to kind of keep this project moving forward. Okay, a little background to remind you guys of the project and Highlands Park itself. The current playground was completed in 1998. It lacks creative play elements and inclusive play. It doesn't meet current access and safety regulations. In June of last summer, city began working with landscape architectural firm SSA to begin the design process. We held community meeting and presented some conceptual design ideas at the commission meeting. And then, if you recall, in November of last year, we presented the designs to you guys who approved the plans and specifications for the project. The project is not only the play area renovation, but it also includes the replacement of the park restroom. So just a little bit about the project. It is going to expand the footprint of the play area. The current size of the play area prohibits an increase of, a number of play features. And the expanded footprint and creative placement of play features will expand the play area. The new gated entrance adjacent to the restroom facility will provide controlled in-and-out access and will act as a safety barrier between the play area and the parking lot. It will have accessible inclusive play elements, including the oodle swing you see there on the top left of your screen. This is a great piece for a group of about four kids to swing together, promotes socialization, inclusive play, and is not in any of our other parks, as you maybe were. A sun deck that you see on the top right-hand of your screen will be constructed around an existing tree at the entrance of the five-to-10-year-old play area to provide additional seating for families and other park visitors. The current restroom does not meet our park needs and will be replaced with a designed prefabricated restroom with additional stalls. The overhead view of the site plan with additional improvements, including an improved accessible path up to Stadium Field that you see at the top part of that image, an improved entrance into the play area, a new concrete to match existing concrete in that area. And then, just looking at the overhead view of the site, the location of the play areas, so that you get kind of some, an idea, the five-to-12-year-old area is in the top hand of your screen, and the lower portion is the two-to-five or tot area. This is an image of the five-to-12-year-old play area with two treehouse pieces, one in the upper hill on your way up towards Stadium, and one down in the main play area with a bridge connecting them. The net climbing features are also part of this large piece. So this is how you can kind of see, we've expanded the footprint, and we brought one of those treehouses into kind of the, in the tree grove. The climbing equipment on the left encourages natural climbing while providing an exciting element of challenge for the kids. For the tots, the ABC climber can help to improve motor skills, coordination, strength and agility, and challenge them in a safe manner. So the project budget. Construction bids for the project were received and opened in late February. Three bids were submitted, although the lowest bid from Maguire and Hester came in under budget. The total bid amount did not leave enough remaining funds to allow for contingencies. Funding in the amount of 1.2 million is currently budgeted. Staff is requesting additional appropriation of $100,000 for contingency. The Parks and Recreation Foundation has a longstanding partnership with the city, providing funding for various park projects, small and large. We currently are working with the foundation on finalizing the naming opportunities for Highlands Park. The foundation plans to launch the program for Highlands at hometown days next month. The total funding contribution amount will be determined in a few weeks, and there will be many naming opportunities at various levels for members of the community to be a part in for Highlands. And as you recall, other community naming opportunity programs the foundation has led include Burton Park Phase 1 and Burton Park Phase 2. So next steps. If the agreement with Maguire and Hester is approved, and if additional funding and expenditures are approved, we would like, or we would be able to start construction next month in May, and the project will be complete this fall. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Amy. Two questions. One is, apropos of the discussion we just had a minute ago, as I recall, in an earlier agreement with PG&E, they were making some contributions towards the Parks and Rec Foundation, were they not? Is that correct? Have we, as part of our budgetary analysis here, have we approached the Parks and Rec Foundation to see whether or not they would be willing to contribute some or all of the additional appropriation?
Um...
Being requested?
We have. So that's part of the naming opportunities, is determining that amount. So they're on board. We just, they haven't decided on that amount. They have a meeting this week.
So, maybe I didn't understand when you were talking about the naming opportunities. Is it possible that the naming opportunity might remove the need to take, for us to find another $100,000 someplace else? Or is that already baked in to, no, we still need $100,000 after we, after the naming opportunity?
So we need an additional $100,000, and potential funding from the foundation could offset some of that on the bottom line.
Could offset some. Okay. So essentially, then, what we are, we would be acting on approving tonight is up to $100,000. We might not, all the extra might not be used. Is that correct?
Contingency.
Okay.
True.
Of the contingency. I applaud doing that. I think, you know, the foundation, this is, this ought to be right up their alley. My other question, I suspect, is actually for Jay, and it's a semi-rhetorical question, but when do you think I'm going to start seeing bids coming in where they're actually below the budget?
Well, if you, if you look at the detail of this, the bid that came in was actually below the budget.
Including the contingency?
Then, then it's, it's difficult to say, but with the climate as good as it is, the economy as strong as it is, contractors are very busy. So I would think that only when we start to see a decline in the economy will we start to see contractor bid prices take a serious dip.
Or perhaps, as, when we do the budget update process over the next couple of months, maybe we revisit some of the budget items and goose them up if we think that they need to be higher. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is a naming activity a euphemism for you pay to put something in the park?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, we had talked last time about, you know, having the community put their stamp on, and on the park in some way, just so that it didn't look like it was right out of the catalog, that it looked like it had, you know, some unique community character. I'm glad that we're doing some. I didn't anticipate that you would have to pay to participate in that. And so I'm wondering, is the idea that, like, if a kid wants to paint a tile to put it on, that their parents have to write a check for that?
Yeah. So the foundation has been selling those tiles. I believe it started with Burton Park Phase 1 back in 2007, 08. Yeah. Where members of the community can purchase the tile, and then they paint it, and it's installed in the park. So it is something that the families do purchase.
And they're just paying the cost of the tile? I mean, I, I think that, when I made the suggestion at the last meeting, the idea was to invite the community to participate in, you know, putting a little local stamp on the park. And I didn't see it necessarily as a fundraising opportunity, more as just an end in and of itself to kind of create some local character. I, I have some small concerns about potentially excluding people who wouldn't otherwise have the means to do that.
Traditionally, the name, the tile has always been a funding opportunity for the foundation and the park projects that have been done in the more recent years. So, that may have been a miscommunication between you and I. Sorry.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't mention anything about raising money. So the, the goal was, like, hey, let's, let's, the local community put a stamp on the park. I, I hope, you know, I don't know how it works logistically, and maybe we can talk to the Park and Rec Foundation offline. But my goal is not that this is only for people who pay. But I don't know. Maybe, maybe the supply exceeds the demand, and we have to do it this way.
I can make a suggestion here. To the extent that there is some available funding left at the end of the project in the contingency with council direction, we could spend some of it on those kind of more personal touches.
Sure. I mean, it shouldn't cost too much money to paint some tiles.
He's at the lottery, that's all. No, I'm just saying, because there might be 70 people that want to do it. So.
All right.
Whatever. Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. I'm a little confused, because there is a, under project cost, it says a construction contingency, 121,000, but you're only asking for 100,000.
Right. So the contract, the lowest bid came in at about $21,521 under. So that's the remainder we have in the current budget. So it's the appropriation of an additional $100,000 plus the difference between our approved budget and the lowest bid.
Okay.
The agreement that we're moving forward with, Maguire and Hester. So it's 100,000 plus the $21,521 to total that for the contingency expenditure.
I don't remember what our contingency was when we did Crestview Park. But I do remember that we had about a 10%...
10, yeah, jasoned about 10%.
It was about 10%. I don't know if we used it all up, or if we needed more. But I do remember with the ACC remodel, the 10% wasn't enough. And so I'm wondering if maybe we ought to have a discussion in the future as to whether or not we want to agree that we should build in, you know, higher contingencies. So that's just sort of a process comment. But my, my, really, the only other question I have is, do you think a 10% in this particular case is enough? Do you think it'll cover it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mr. Grokot?
So the only question I have is, kind of the, you know, overall checkbook. And I guess that's, wouldn't be for you necessarily, but somebody, you know, if I'm looking at this as a homeowner, and I'm saying, well, my contingency is putting me over budget, then I'm going to look at my whole year's spending and say, okay, but that's all right, because I saved, you know, 80,000 over there, and I saved 30,000 over there. And so spending an extra 100 here is not going to hurt my overall picture. Does anybody have a tag on that?
I understand what you're saying. I mean, where we're coming from when we do these projects, right, is that we're just estimating upfront. So, you know, we've, we have, you know, kind of...
So, you know, we've, we have, you know, kind of defined the scope of the project upfront in terms of what it is we're trying to do, right? Replace the playground equipment, you know, rubberized surface, new bathroom, that, that kind of thing. And the engineers do their best, you know, to estimate the cost of the project and we put that money in. You know, we, you know, the, the sort of the flip side of what you're saying is, when I bring you the budget, I could just really inflate all the numbers and tie up a lot more money for these projects. What we've always tried to do is to sharpen the pencil and get as close as we realistically can and then not be afraid to come back and show the council, here are the numbers. Now, if you say no, then what we will do is, is we won't award this contract. We'll delay the project and we'll go back and sharpen our pencil and maybe take a piece of play equipment out or, or modify the park in some way so as to bring the number down. But what I'm getting at really is that there's not really a lot of magic to what went into creating that budget number upfront. It was just a guess. It was an educated guess. And, you know, in this case, it, you know, was pretty darn close to the mark.
But I guess, so I guess the other way I could put this is despite this, I'm not saying it's over budget, don't, that's not what I'm trying to say. But I'm just saying if we're going to come up with, you know, when we do our budget, we do try to have a pretty good, you know, okay, we got this much revenue, we've got that much expenditure and we want to be pretty well balanced. We're pretty conservative. We always end up with extra at the end of the year. So I guess that's really, my question is, you know, maybe we have revenues that are coming in a little higher than we expected. So putting 100,000 towards this contingency is not really going to cause us, it's not going to cause us heartache someplace else, I guess is really what I'm saying, right? Okay, all right.
Okay. I have one speaker card. Liz McGee Min. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, fill out a card? Yeah.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mayor Grisilli, council members. I am Liz Min and I'm representing the Parks and Rec Foundation of San Carlos. As you know, the Parks and Rec Foundation of San Carlos has a longstanding relationship with the city and the community. We were founded in 2006 and our board members have always worked to represent the group of dedicated San Carlos, Carlands, who have worked to ensure the legacy and quality parks and community spaces here in town. Our primary role as a foundation is to assist the city of San Carlos in fundraising, scholarship programs and public awareness efforts, which ensure our San Carlos parks are celebrated, well-maintained, inclusive, sustainable and feature amenities which reflect the needs of all of their residents and visitors of all ages. As such, Amy Newby, Director of the Parks and Rec Department, recently met with us about financially supporting the Highlands Park renovation project, specifically through the avenue of naming rights. We've just spoken about this, but it's basically putting a plaque or other approved signage on the park amenity. Examples would be benches, trees, play structures, et cetera. We found this way of donating to the foundation popular among families who wish to memorialize a loved one or declare their own love of parks and community. Businesses and community organizations also gravitate towards this model of support. To give you a sense of the past Parks and Rec Foundation naming rights campaign, as Amy mentioned, in 2008 and '09, the foundation raised $300,000 for Phase One of the Burton Park project. And in 2012 and '13, we generated over 120,000 for the Burton Park Phase Two. Our community is very generous and we know that in 2017, we can do even better. We went to publicly acknowledge that the Parks and Recreation Foundation of San Carlos is ready to heed the call of Highlands Park. We will engage city staff as we create fun, visible naming rights campaigns, which we know will help make the Highlands Park project a success. Some of this work has already begun. We're currently editing materials to ensure messaging, visuals and outreach methods are effective and agreed upon before we deploy in May of 2017. Thank you for your time and for your ongoing support of the Parks and Rec Foundation work. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Maguire and Hester in the amount of $1,178,479 for the Highlands Park Playground Renovation and Restroom Replacement Project, appropriating 100,000 to the project budget from the general fund and authorizing an expenditure of contingency in the amount of $121,521.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
So I heard what the city manager suggested. I'm just wondering if the council wants to add anything to Cameron's motion to be sure of that. Not, not that he'd be nefarious and not do it, but what I'm saying is if we might want to add something to this so that we're directing staff to come up with some way to meet, I agree with Cameron. I don't think it should be just because you have the funds to do that sort of thing that you get to participate, but somebody from a lower income level who can't afford to give can't participate. And I think that's unfortunate. So if we could have something that, in the motion, that would, that would almost create leverage for not spending the contingency and in fact having it be a robust scholarship or award program for some type of contest we might put together where the community could participate and, and not have to pay into the fund.
If, if I might make a suggestion along those lines, there, Amy told me just a few minutes ago that there's room for nine details in this display. And so what I asked her to do and what you might codify in your motion is that the city would reimburse the Parks and Rec Foundation for 20 of those tiles, that they would then have a process in place to, you know, through a contest or an application or whatever, to low-income families in town to be able to be awarded one of those tiles and participate.
So Cameron, would you take a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yeah, absolutely.
In that spirit?
Okay. That sounds good. Mr. Collins, do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Olbert?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Jeff, I think you understood my comment or my discussion with Amy a few minutes ago about, I believe there was a fair amount of money from PG&E that ended up going into the Parks and Rec Foundation, okay? I'm going to vote for this motion and I like the amendment that's been proposed. I really want staff to have some in-depth discussions with the Parks and Rec Foundation about whether this would be an appropriate use for some of that money to help offset the, either more of the tiles or help offset simply the overrun on the expenses. I mean, my expectation when we routed that money there was in fact that it would be used for this notes, their discretion as to where they do it, but I hope that staff will have an in-depth discussion with them.
Absolutely, we will. And, and, you know, I kind of look at it from a big picture perspective. At the end of the day, that money's going to come back to us via, vis a vis this project or the next project or another project. So it, and, and it's all coming out of the same pot of money, so.
This is the one right in front of us now and we can improve the quality of life in town by not tapping into the juggle.
Absolutely, and we've had a great partnership with the foundation and I'm sure they're going to be very excited to participate.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli.
Yes, all right. Moving on to 10B, which is the consideration of adopting a resolution adopting a uniform relocation policy. Mr. Suvay?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. In our experience, relocating people from affordable housing to other housing is a very challenging and daunting process. And staff has had some recent experience in this area. Historically, the city of San Carlos has dealt with this on a case-by-case basis. And tonight, we are presenting a resolution for the establishment of a relocation policy that would address the city's objectives for future affordable housing projects in the very near future, 817 Walnut Street, for instance. And with a more detailed description of what this policy is, I'm going to ask Nell Seeland or our Economic Development Coordinator to provide you with a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. As Al mentioned, I'm, sorry, I'm Nell Seeland, Economic Development Coordinator. I'm here to briefly present tonight on the uniform relocation policy that you have for your consideration before you. All right, so relocation refers to the city's requirement to provide assistance to people that it displaces when it acquires or redevelops property. This requirement is outlined in state and federal law and applies to both commercial and residential properties owned by public entities. Under California state law, public entities are required to adopt rules and regulations regarding relocation assistance. As Al mentioned, in the past, the city has chosen to do this on a case-by-case basis. One example is when the City Council adopted a relocation plan in 2013 for the tenants at 657 Walnut Street. That's part of the Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project. And that relocation took about three years to complete and was finally wrapped up at the end of last year. So under state and federal law, displaced persons are entitled to advisory assistance, reimbursement for moving expenses and in some cases, a cash subsidy for replacement The uniform relocation policy that's included with the staff report as Exhibit A to the resolution does two things. Firstly, it adopts by reference the state and federal relocation law that already applies to the city. And secondly, it provides displaced persons with the option of a priority placement in new or existing below-market-rate units in the city, as well as in new BMR units created at the displacement site. So really what this means is that displaced households will be eligible for new and existing BMR units ahead of those already on our BMR waitlist. That said, any displaced household taking advantage of the priority placement provision will still have to meet any other eligibility requirement of that below-market-rate unit. So for example, if a moderate-income household is displaced, they would not be eligible for a very low-income unit. So the households still have to match the eligibility requirements. The primary benefit of this policy is that it can speed up the relocation of displaced households by helping to facilitate moving these displaced households to comparable replacement housing that may be available. Additionally, by relocating lower-income households to these, these rent-restricted below-market-rate units that are affordable to them, this will reduce the cost of rental assistance the city may have to pay in a case where we're moving them to, let's say, market-rate replacement housing. So for your consideration is this uniform relocation policy. And of course, you may elect not to adopt this policy this evening and provide us with further, further direction on this topic. I'm available to answer any questions as well as our special counsel is here, Michael Biddle from Burke Williams &amp; Sorensen, who can speak to state and federal relocation law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nell. Just a quick question to make sure I understand, both from your presentation and my review of the materials. It doesn't sound like adopting this policy is going to create any, either additional, it's not going to create any additional obligations on the city. It, what it essentially is doing is something very important, which is establishing the prioritization rules for how our affordable housing inventory can be used by various people. Is that correct?
Correct. That was our intention.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting a uniform relocation policy.
Second.
All right, we moved to second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli.
Yes. All right, move back to 9A. I have a question for Mr. Malpe. Will, is this the only time we'll be discussing this? Or will the other, will there be future meetings where we'll be discussing, again, study session, other parts of this?
Well, the whole item is in front of you here in terms of study session. So if we, if we get through it and we get the direction we feel like we need from the council tonight, then it won't come back in study session form in the future, but the actionable business calendar items will come forward.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just...
All right. Who is going to give the report? Or discussion or lead the, lead the?
I'm giving the report.
You are?
Yeah, but I, our police chief, I saw him out there and he's disappeared. He's also part of it.
I understand.
And then I also wanted to ask the council if you wanted to take a brief break before we jump into this one, since we may be at this one for a while.
No, I think we just, we have, it's quarter to nine. I'd love to have it wrapped up by 10:15 or so. We'll see. That's why I asked the question, because I'm not sure we're going to be able to come to the final thing on some of this, so. Anyway, go ahead. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Jeff Malpe, city manager, for those folks watching at home. Not often that we get to talk about an entire new area of public policy and you guys know I'm a kind of a policy wonk, which is why I'm presenting this here for you tonight. So in, in typical fashion, like we start all these meetings, we'll say hi.
Hi.
How do you spell that?
I didn't wear my hat. I should have worn my grass hat tonight, but I forgot, so darn.
I'm going to give you just a real brief overview in terms of kind of how I'd hope you're looking at this, this evening in terms of big components that we're going to be talking about. And then I'm going to turn it over to the chief to, to talk about a few of the public, public safety issues so that you've got that in the front of your mind as we go through the rest of the presentation. Obviously, back in November, Proposition 64 passed. Recreational marijuana is a reality now in the state of California and it's our job to come up with regulations for our local community here in San Carlos. And they kind of fall into a couple of areas that the law allows you to regulate that, that you can think about tonight. There's the residential component that's fairly straightforward, but does allow some regulatory opportunities. There's the, what you might call the, the consumption component, where you can use marijuana in the community. There are business components to this, which is a lot of what we're talking, going to be talking about here tonight. Business regulations like we do with any other business category, type of business that operates in the city. And those are the, those are really the areas that we're going to be focused on tonight. I'll go through and just get you started with this first slide before I turn it over to the chief for his comments. If you'd have asked me seven years ago when I was appointed as the city manager here in San Carlos, whether or not I'd be making this presentation to you, I'd have said no. No way, you know? Maybe one day, but, you know, not seven years later. But here we are. You know, as the, kind of the campaign and the rhetoric over the last couple of years related to this issue unfolded, I really didn't give it much thought one way or another in terms of, you know, how it might work out or what public regulations would, would look like. And, and that had a lot to do with this slide right here, the data in front of you. You know, it's not often that we get a really strong data point when we're talking about a policy issue directly from our community, our voters, last November in a very high voter turnout election. You know, as you can see in the state of California, Prop 64 passed with 57% countywide. It did even better with 63. And San Carlos was one of the, one of the higher cities in the county at 65%. And, you know, obviously, you know, when, when you're talking about public policymaking, you want to be able to take, you know, public sentiment into that process to help inform the regulations and, and type of things that, that you might be doing to, to govern that activity in, in your community. And here we have a very good data point. So as we go forward tonight, you know, this is really where my thinking started on this particular issue, looking at, at this data and talking to folks in San Carlos and kind of understanding how the community felt about the issue. With that said, public safety is very important and there's actually a few different components of public safety as it relates to this item. And we want to, you know, be as transparent as we can with the community as we talk about these potential regulations. So I'd like to ask Chief Roethlis if he can come up and make a few comments for the City Council and the community.
Welcome, chief.
Welcome, thank you. Mayor Grisilli, Members of the Council, Greg Roethlis, Police Chief. Yeah, the staff just thought it would be a good idea, maybe it would make sense to hear from me on the subject of marijuana and its impacts and especially public safety.
Mayor Griselli, members of council, Greg Roethlis, police chief. Yeah, the staff just thought it would be a good idea, maybe it would make sense to hear from me on the subject of marijuana and its impacts, and especially public safety. From a law enforcement perspective, when this thing was coming down the road, we took a look at what was going on in other areas. For example, Colorado, there wasn't a lot of, necessarily, from a law enforcement perspective, good news coming out of Colorado with respect to the passage of the marijuana law. They saw an increase in things such as DUI, really marijuana-related crimes, such as driving under the influence, theft, burglary, those types of things. You know, we've looked at other communities that honestly haven't seen that kind of stuff in Oregon, for example. But they're there, and I think it's important that council, you know, the idea of this is that council sees that, you know, this law passed, there are some, I think the community believes that there's some good that can come with that, but it's important that you see that it's not going to be all rainbows and butterflies. That's a very good possibility. So, you know, just going on record and letting council know that is important. But from my perspective, my issues as a police chief are really very practical. Marijuana plants cost over $2,000 to $3,000, $4,000 just for one plant. So, the theft of that and the money used to purchase those is a concern for me. Site security, if we do allow that, and making sure that we have tight site security is also a concern. And then something very practical, such as adequate parking, where we put it. People need to park. Other businesses who are already in place should not be necessarily unduly affected by that, so that has to be considered, that traffic aspect of it. And then, you know, one of the reasons that marijuana passed is because I think the public felt that there was a lot of law enforcement energy going into combating marijuana. So, whatever we do, my hope would be that we don't, you know, end up, from a city's perspective, being to a point where we regulate it so much that we actually caused more work for police than we did before the law passed. So, I'm hoping that the local regulation isn't something that's going to unduly burden the police bureau, given that the voters of California have decided to pass this law. So, that's my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. We may have questions later. Thank you.
All right. So, we'll jump back into the presentation here, starting with personal cultivation. So, this is residential that we're talking about now, in terms of the law allows people to grow their six plants. It does allow the council to regulate where they grow it, and you can see there's a number of, you know, you can have annual inspections. You could allow that. You could prohibit indoor growing in common areas, like a hallway, or, you know, require plants be grown contiguously, and all these things. All these things would mean all this regulation and inspection and cost to the city is sending city employees into people's homes, things that typically we try not to do here in San Carlos, which is why, from my point of view, I would not be recommending that we get involved in the personal cultivation regulation business, you know, and rather just let the law govern, let people grow their plants in their backyard or inside as they see fit. It's their property, to the extent they have children, they're their children, and they should be responsible under the law. But I don't think we want to get into the, you know, the business and the expense of inspecting everybody's home for this issue, or, you know, are we going to start checking to make sure people's liquor cabinets are locked and that kind of thing? I just don't, I don't see there being an upside for it. So, I'm recommending against that. But obviously, the council has the ability to say, we want to regulate all these things. We want to not allow folks to grow this stuff in their backyard. Those would be the options on the table for you in this particular area. In terms of public consumption, what we're saying, what we're basically doing is we're trying to mirror our tobacco and alcohol-smoking regulations that are on the books, so not in parks, not in any public buildings. Could you consume cannabis? You can smoke it or ingest it. But we would, at this point, allow consumption and smoking, smoking in particular in multifamily dwellings. The council has said that next year, they'd like to take a look at those regulations, and so we're planning to bring that on smoking back to you, and when we do, we would obviously include this right along the same lines when we do that. But that would be another possibility for you to be able to create a category of regulations. Again, we're not recommending that at this time, but more just because we'd like to keep it on the same track as what we're doing with tobacco smoke. So, land use. Now, we get to the, you know, the regulation that, you know, as they say, you know, variety is the spice of life. Well, the law has given you quite a bit of variety when it comes to land use and business regulations here. So, we're basically saying that we want to, you know, we want to exclude any home-based occupations related to cannabis. We want the commercial business locations to be 600 feet away from any residences. The law basically structured that it says it has to be 600 feet away from schools and daycare centers and those kinds of special uses, but it doesn't actually have any setback when it comes to residential under Prop 64. And what we're suggesting is that, you know, we take that 600-foot requirement under Prop 64 for those school and youth-related distances from those types of businesses, and we apply that same thing to residents in San Carlos, so that there would be a 600-foot requirement of distance from a residential home or apartment to any marijuana-related business. Commercial business locations in the mixed-use zoning district, we ban operators in mixed-use zoning districts, including downtown, which really, for the most part, fall in that 600-foot. You know, there might be a couple little sections of downtown, not downtown proper, but a little further away that aren't within that 600-foot, but most of it is anyway, and so we're just saying, exclude it. And then, commercial cultivation, we don't have any categories for commercial, business categories for commercial ag in San Carlos, and so there really isn't a category of zoning for those particular business licenses within the community. There are some applications, as we'll get to in a minute, for nurseries or microbusinesses, but not a big ag grow. We just don't have that type of land use. So, as we begin to get in here to this commercial cannabis business, really, I hope the question that the council's kind of got in the front of their mind is, you know, do you want to allow any commercial business activity related to marijuana in San Carlos? Because you have the ability to just exclude it, to just say, we're not going to have any marijuana businesses in San Carlos. That the law allows you. My take, you know, again, going back to that first slide with, you know, how folks in San Carlos voted on this, is that, you know, there's probably, you know, probably more of a traditional San Carlos business regulation approach is to go kind of down the middle of the road here. And so, the recommendations that we've got here for you to think about, and again, you know, you're not doing, taking any action tonight, so they're just there to help you hone your thinking on this, are really designed around that idea of just kind of being, you know, in the middle of the pack. So, we can think about, you know, several different big categories of businesses. There's manufacturing businesses, and you'll see some slides later in the presentation that kind of show you some areas of the city. There's manufacturing businesses that San Carlos allows, right? Manufacturing is a category of zoning in San Carlos. And, you know, that's not growing, that's, you know, that would be, you know, making products, you know, taking in raw marijuana or whatever and making products out of it that would be, you know, a business-to-business-type sales, not retail sales. And we see that happening all over San Carlos, and as the chief said earlier, you know, as long as, you know, they're securing their business and they have every incentive to be securing their business, and they're not, there wouldn't be businesses that are open to the public or doing retail sales. Our take is, we have all kinds of manufacturing happening in San Carlos with, you know, very, you know, dangerous chemicals and, you know, dangerous processes happening in the industrial area, and they follow the law and the regulations, and they pass their inspections, and, you know, we don't have a problem with that. And that would be sort of our recommendation at the staff level about manufacturing. We just don't, we don't really see it as being particularly special within the category of manufacturing. In terms of retail sales, I'm going to jump around here a little bit on this slide and talk about retail, and then we're going to kind of back into the beginning, into that middle piece. What we're suggesting on retail sales is that if the council wishes to allow that, that there would be no more than three permits allowed in the city of San Carlos, and that's based a little bit off of best practice, based on our population size. What some of the guidelines are saying is that, you know, three retail locations would be as many as you'd really want to allow. And what we would propose to do is a competitive permit process, so that, kind of like an RFP process, we would be able to select the actual businesses who we would award that permit to. And that would allow us to put, you know, some more, one, a few more restrictions around security, also, though, around sort of the design of the business, you know, to make sure that it has a San Carlos feel, and it's up to our standard, to be able to review the business operators, to make sure that, you know, their backgrounds are clean and that they're above board, and they have good, strong business practices relative to the kind of businesses we like to see here in San Carlos, and also that we have very strong revocation ability on the permit. In other words, if they don't live up to their standards, if their security is lax, if there's issues in their retail business, we have the ability very quickly to pull that permit back. And that would be another advantage of going with a competitive process, just to create that little more level of control. Along those same lines of retail, there's a category, a permit category, for distribution, like, you know, I mean, we're all familiar with alcohol distributors, right? You know, the wholesale market. You know, just because, you know, they would be moving, you know, so much, you know, quantity and whatnot, I would suggest that we have, we also limit the number of permits if we're going to allow that category in town of distributor to three permits and make those permits competitive as well, so that we, you know, gives us that extra ability to review, the extra ability to put, you know, conditions on through the minor-use permit process and the competitive permit process that we would be looking to do. There's another category sort of related to cultivation. It's a little bit, it took me a little while to kind of wrap my mind around the differences there, but that is a category of nurseries, right? We do allow nurseries in San Carlos, you know. Orchard Supply has a nursery, Home Depot has a nursery, you know. Nurseries are a business you can operate here. And so, you know, would we, could we allow permits along those lines? And, you know, based on our existing zoning, the answer is yes, we have those kinds of businesses. So, we're proposing that, you know, we don't see an issue there in terms of allowing nurseries to operate. They sell immature plants, seeds, that kind of thing. There really didn't seem to be, you know, a lot of concern from any of the staff members around allowing that particular category, the nursery category. Obviously, they'd be subject to the 600-foot and all the other business security provisions that are required under the law. Now, the one that gets a little bit confusing, and the reason why I left it to last, is this micro-business category, and that's kind of the soup to nuts of legalized marijuana businesses. So, you could, under a micro-business category under Prop 64, what you could have is a business space of up to 10,000 square feet of an indoor grow here. So, if you had a warehouse, you know, that was 10,000-plus square feet, you could grow up to 10,000 square feet of marijuana in a micro-business. And then, you could also do what you might consider light manufacturing, so anything not involving any volatile chemicals or any volatile processes. You know, they could do, you know, basic manufacturing, or baking, or whatever it is that they're doing. And then, they, under the, under the micro-business, they could also have retail sales. So, it's, they could grow it, put it together, and sell it to the public. And so, what we're saying basically, and our recommendation, is that if, under the three retail permits that we're, you know, we're suggesting to the council to think about, if, you know, any one of those three, one, two, or three of them are micro-businesses, then those take up your three retail permits that you'd be allowing. You wouldn't allow, you know, three retail locations and three micro-businesses that also have retail locations. It'd be fixed to three. But you could allow an unlimited number of micro-businesses that didn't permit any retail sales. So, in other words, if you had a warehouse and you had your 10,000-square-foot grow, and then you, you know, put stuff together, or whatever, that would be okay, as long as you weren't doing retail sales. You'd have to fall under one of those three retail permits as we go forward. So, this slide is talking a lot about what we just talked about. The law itself is very specific in terms of, you know, physical security and those kinds of things, or hours of operation is something that we would, you know, we would tailor to the neighborhood and type of businesses that are already there, and the typical business hours for those categories. By having, you know, by having competitive permit process, it really allows us to put a lot of additional requirements onto the business to really take a look at who they are, what they've done, how they do business. So, here, these next few slides are maps, and they'll give you a little bit of an idea of sort of where things might be able to fall. And these are big boxes. So, what we didn't do is we didn't try to get down to the absolute nth degree here and say, well, okay, within the yellow box, there's a childcare center right here, so we're going to try to edit that out right now. All that very specific planning approvals would happen, and that analysis would be done at the time we were looking at actual permit applications, but for the sake of the map, it just didn't seem particularly relevant. So, we wanted to show you basically where these things could go in San Carlos under the proposed regulations that we've talked about here tonight. So, this would be for the manufacturing, micro-businesses-type categories. Testing is another one that we felt was not an issue for allowing permits for testing facilities in San Carlos. Manufacturing, we talked about, this would be the big manufacturing with, you know, volatile solvents. This is where we have our heavier manufacturing happening and allowed in the city currently. Nurseries, these are the areas of the city where you could currently have a nursery. And this would be the standalone areas where you could have a standalone retail location, which is more limited, because, you know, as you know, retail is not on the, in the industrial area, certain parts of the industrial and commercial area isn't actually in allowed use in specific retail. So, again, going back to, here, you could see, you could have micro-businesses within these areas with a retail component, but if you're just a straight retailer, again, under our existing zoning, and the council could always change that, these would be the areas where a business like that could function. So, before we get into the taxes and whatnot in the presentation, I think I'd like to maybe get some discussion going with the council, just to determine, you know, if we're on the right track, how does the council feel about this? Because obviously, you can just pull the lever, saying, hey, no business, no marijuana businesses in San Carlos, and then that makes this whole process a lot easier in terms of, you know, there's not a lot we're going to have to come back with, be pretty, pretty simple process. You know, our take at the staff level, again, was looking at, you know, sort of the overall business history of the city, looking at how voters voted in the recent election on this particular issue, and determining that, you know, we, you know, we feel like if we're going to deny commercial property owners on the east side the ability to benefit from their property economically, and something that now is legal in the state of California, we should have good reason to do that. And as we looked at it, and as we talked to the fire department, police department, and the other departments of the city, you know, we kind of struggled to come up with, you know, we could come up with a lot you know, we could come up with a lot of potential fears, but we couldn't come up with a lot of real reasons why you wouldn't allow this, you know, some of this business activity, you know, being heavily regulated as it's being proposed to take place here in San Carlos. And then, you know, the last thought before I turn it over to you guys is that, you know, whatever regulations you put in place, again, can always be changed and amended one way or another down the road.
So my thought is, you know, it's a very, not confusing, but it's very voluminous, in my opinion, all these different things. We could talk about them all together, but I was thinking we would, and again, if the council doesn't want to do this, I mean, to me, it's like, I would go one by one. In other words, the first step is, do you want any retail? If everybody says no, boom, we're out there. If the second one is manufactured, et cetera, et cetera, there's five areas here, or six, one, two, three, four, five, six. So I mean, that was the first thing I was going to take a poll.
Yeah, that would be very helpful to start to get a sense from the council.
There's no sense to talk about this stuff if all of us, if the board of us don't want to do it.
I agree, and there's even less sense in us spending, you know, a lot of time, energy, and money writing the ordinances that would come back if that's not the direction the council wants to go.
Now, Mr. Rubens, can I sort of take a poll of if folks want to have retail? Can I do that?
This is in the form of agenda setting, so you have a study session if the council doesn't want to take up any particular issue in the future, that's what you would do.
So, I mean, do my fellow council members agree with that concept?
I actually, I like your idea, but I actually had some questions going all the way back to like personal cultivation and public consumption.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, let's do this then. If there's questions about what he said, then definitely we'll take those. But I'd rather not discuss it until we, I mean, you know, our opinions.
Actually, I'm fine if you want to do your idea, which I like, but start with the personal consumption one and just say, "Is everybody okay with what staff's saying there?" That's essentially what you're doing with the...
I was looking more at the business side. I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah. Well, personally, I agree 100% with what staff has come up with on personal cultivation.
Okay, I had a question and a...
Okay, what about you, Mr. Collins?
I, I, sorry.
I agree as well.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm on board with that.
Yeah, I'm good with the cultivation.
I am, except for the visibility part of it because of what Mr., what the chief said, that these plants have a lot of value. It just seems common sense that somebody would not want to grow marijuana plants the way they do tomato plants because they're going to end up with people on their property.
That's a possibility. Mr. Oberg?
That, I think, is similar to what my concern was, or question, is it seem to me that some subset of these regulations, like the number of plants and whatnot, to the extent that they were visible from the public area and therefore were not requiring us to get warrants to go into somebody's house, but could they not be treated and enforced, we get rules about that, and be treated and enforced on an exception basis, kind of like we do with people reporting sidewalk cracks, saying, "Hey, my neighbor is growing 40 plants." Okay?
Yeah, I guess we could do that, but I'm concerned, you know, like any, anything that we put in, somebody's got to do it. And again, we could use your example, you know, of no harm unless somebody says there's a harm, but go ahead.
Yeah, in terms of the enforcement, that would be fine, you know, on a, you know, community complaint basis. However, you still need the regulation that they're violating.
Correct. That's what I was assuming, that we'd have to have a regulation that they violate.
You would say something to the extent of, it can't be, and I think you'd want to be specific in this case and say, "It can't be visible from the street, like the public right-of-way, street or sidewalk." So it's not, "Hey, you know, I can see it over my neighbor's fence," and I, you know, that's what we really don't want to get into. So if the council feels like, "Hey, you know, we don't want it to be visible from the public right-of-way," that'd be a very easy regulation for us to create.
There's two people that want that. What are the other three people want to do? What do you want to do, Mr. Collins?
I like, I like having a regulation that says not visible from public right-of-way.
Right, and Mr. Johnson? Of course, you don't really need your...
My point of view is moot at this point.
The less we, again, it's going to be almost like, the way this is going, and like you said, seven years, you didn't think you'd say it, I mean, in seven years, it's going to be like, "Oh, yeah, there's some stuff there."
And we're not really voting on it, it's just, do we want it on the dais to talk about?
You guys, you know, okay, and there's three votes that want to talk about that part of it, so we need to have, we need to have some sort of a discussion when we come back, another time on that. So is staff understand what we're...
Well, what I'm hoping to do is get enough direction from you that I can actually begin to write these regulations to come back to. Because we're actually on a shot clock here.
I understand, and that's why I'm trying to cut through this. So it sounds like three people want to have a regulation on visibility of some sort.
From the public right-of-way.
From the public right-of-way, okay, all right.
I had a quick question about public consumption, and either Jeff or Greg. I like the idea of deferring whether we put any public regulations on it until we talk about smoking in general, that's fine. Just out of curiosity, can an individual landlord, a property owner, by right of contract basically say, "I'm not allowing this on my property"?
Yes, the answer is yes to that. The lease could include a provision, no smoking, and it could be, talk about recreational marijuana as well.
Do we have a consensus on public consumption, assumption that we go with staff on this?
Can I ask one clarifying question? So if, this talks about consumption, but presumably if you consumed somewhere else and then went to a public park, that would be covered under public intoxication?
That's correct, yeah, and it's really more behavior-based.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really more behavior-based than, you know, just like, you know, you can't drink in a park, but, you know, if you've had a couple of drinks and you go to the park, you're probably fine. If you've had, you know, a ton of drinks and you go to the park, we're probably going to get a call.
Okay, okay. You want to go to land use? I appreciate, Mr. Oberg, what you said, because I think we really should, we could go through these different ones and then go to the specific business uses.
Yeah, I had, I had a...
Land use?
Yes, I had one or two questions on land use. One, actually, Jeff, since the state, since the law that was actually passed does not, you said, restrict it to being at least 600 feet away from residential areas, what was the thinking behind doing that? And we already carve out, we, you know, we don't allow businesses to exist in residential areas already, so why?
Right, why the reason for the extra buffer? Well, it, from our perspective, it seemed actually kind of obvious, right? If you're saying that, you know, it needs to be a certain distance away from schools and it needs to be a certain distance away from daycare centers and parks, then doesn't it, I mean, for the purpose that that's where kids are learning and playing, well, kids do that at home more than anywhere. So why not have the same distance requirements from residential as you would from those special uses?
I understand that, but then what's your reaction to the, and again, I'm not saying whether, I'm trying to test whether I agree with it or not. I, I mean, there are places that I know of that sell alcohol and tobacco within 600 feet of residential areas. Those are legal also, those also cause significant problems for kids, and in fact, the consumption of them is regulated, kids are not supposed to be able to buy them. We don't ban that. We don't have a 600-foot barrier saying, "Hey, you know, you can't sell alcohol within 600 feet of a residential area." So why the difference?
Well, for us, because one, I guess the biggest reason for me is because you're making these regulations now and the law gives you that choice. The law doesn't always give you that choice, but you have it right now, and I think there's something that Greg would like to add.
Well, one of the issues we're grappling with this new law is what happens with land uses that come in after a marijuana-related business comes in? So one of the solutions, I think that seemed pretty simple, is if we restrict 600 feet from a residential area, we've automatically taken care of future daycare centers that might be located in a residential area. So we're creating this buffer that's anticipating that we might have uses that are inconsistent with the 600-foot rule for marijuana businesses.
That's, to me, that's a, that's a stronger argument, because the note I wrote here is effectively what we're talking about doing is sort of the old red light district thing, you know, where adult sales material was allowed, but it was only in a certain part of town. But I like Greg's argument, so I'm, I'm okay with the, with the proposed...
Any other comments on land use? Yes, Mr. Grokka?
I had some notes on the 602, and I was wondering where it came from, so you've answered that question, it makes sense. But we would, it sounds to me like if we wanted to increase that to some other distance, we could, we could do that as well.
That's correct. All the way to outside the city.
Yeah, I get that. But no, well, just my thinking on it, and we can, we'll discuss it more later, but I was just breaking down what 600 feet is, it's two football fields, and it almost seems like, well, if it's just two football fields, you might as well not have it at all. But then with what Greg said, there's some sense to it, but anyways. So I guess we'll have something in there and we can debate it at the time, so.
So, it looks like the next few slides would, would now go into the, you could, you could reference back to the definition of license types, to me. In other words, instead of discussing the next few ones, we're going to, if we, if we start with the six things that are at the back of our packet, well, of course, on your computers, it's back on my packet, to talk about, I think, is that correct? I think that sort of...
That would be helpful, yes.
So the first, the first one, well, we don't...
There's a slide that relates to that.
It's the last, it's attachment three, I guess, on your computers.
This is the slide that I guess most closely...
Yeah, but it, but this one actually breaks out every of the six items, it breaks it out. So it's attachment three. Attachment three, mine on your computers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Sorry, I'm way ahead of you. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Just a couple of questions on the section.
So, I don't want to talk about commercial cannabis business, though, I don't want to talk about that.
We're talking about land use.
We're going, pardon me?
Talking about land use.
I'm sorry, land use, go ahead, yes, I'm sorry.
What was the next section that you were going to go on?
I'm going to go to the attachment three, there's breakdown, the six different things we can do or not do. It's not in your packet, it's on your computer, for those of you that have computers. Did you find, except me, did you find it?
Testing, cultivation...
Definition of license types is what I'm getting at.
Micro-business, all that.
Definition of license types. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is retail. So it's, what, do people want to allow retail or not?
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure, of course, yeah.
It's kind of a question for the chief, and maybe for Jeff too. So I'll just sort of tell you how I'm coming at this at a high level, which is, I agree with you that 65% of people voted for the ballot measure. That's, I don't draw a straight line from 65% of people voted to allow retail establishments in San Carlos. I'm guessing that if that was on the ballot, it would be somewhat different. In my best attempt to kind of think about what would be the priority for the residents of San Carlos, I think they would put number one, like keeping it away from kids, and with the goal of not having kids establish, you know, drug-dependent habits that have a major impact on their education or their ability to function in life. And so my question to you, Chief, is, do you believe there is any correlation between having retail establishments in the city in which you live and increased usage of marijuana among, say, teenagers?
I think that's a law enforcement concern. I'd have no way of really saying that definitively, but I can tell you...
But if you think it's a concern, can you just unpack a little bit what the concern is, like?
Well, I can tell you, for example, some of the concerns that came out of Colorado's experience, their law enforcement experience, has been more referrals to police regarding minors' involvement with marijuana. They're reporting higher usage of minors with marijuana. I, you know, I haven't...
In the state?
That's a mistake.
Is that in cities that have retail locations?
That, I'm not sure. That's what they're reporting in the state overall. I mean, you know, and in fairness, I have not had a, you know, a chance to delve into these studies. They're obviously law enforcement-based, and so we have a particular bend on the issue, I'm sure you would understand. And so, in fairness, I think I should say that, but yeah, law enforcement is concerned with it in general. In terms of whether having a store here, or having a store in Belmont, or having a store in Redwood City will have greater impact on our kids, it's hard for me to say. I just couldn't say, it would be unfair, so. I've had the opportunity to reach out to some colleagues, you know, around the country who are ahead of California in this, and, you know, it seems like there's probably not going to, you know, ultimately, there's still a lot of data nationwide that needs to be collected on this issue, right? This is a brand-new policy area, which is what makes it so interesting. But there, you know, I'd be surprised with what I'm hearing if there'll be a correlation between the business locations and any usage issues in your community, because it's actually the business locations that are being required and a lot have the most security, they have the most at stake in losing their license by selling to minors, you know, it's really more likely, just like, you know, with, with alcohol, you know, kids tend not to get it from, you know, liquor store, they tend to get it from...
The family liquor cabinet.
The family liquor cabinet, exactly, or a family member, or, you know, an adult sibling, or, or something along those lines, and not an actual, you know, retail location, because there's so much at stake for these businesses if they're caught selling to minors. You know, maybe, you know, 30 or 40 years ago, you know, you kind of get away with people, you know, tapping people to go into a liquor store and buy liquor for you, but, you know, these days, those occurrences have gotten to be rarer and rarer.
Actually, I'd like to follow up on that, though, because I had a similar concern from a little bit different perspective. I could argue myself either way on allowing retail sales in San Carlos. Is there any way for us to, and I'm not saying I would be definitively guided by this, but is there any way for us to actually try and get some insight into Cameron, the answer to Cameron's question, which is, what does the average person in San Carlos feel about retail establishments? You know, could we do that on Shape San Carlos? I know that's not a scientific method, but is there a way to get some information?
Yeah, I mean, we could try to do that on Shape San Carlos, that would probably be our best tool for that. There's not, like I said, you know, it's, you know, it would be difficult to weigh 100 responses on Shape San Carlos against, you know, thousands of votes having been cast in the last election, and try to make sense of those two different metrics. But we certainly do it. You know, beyond that, I think, you know, probably you'd have to actually go out and survey the community scientifically on...
Personally, I'm not sure I'd allow to do, but, but I wouldn't mind getting, before we make a final decision on this, because it's going to come back to us anyway, trying to get some of that perspective.
Right, and, you know, and then, since we kind of stopped at the, at the tax slide, and, you know, in my estimation, there's a correlation here, right? You know, because the types of issues that are, you know, most likely to demand police resources related to this is going to be marijuana usage. You know, somebody's taking too much, they have to be transported to the hospital, they've, you know, whatever gone out of control, driven under the influence, those types of things that will require a public safety response, and there's a cost associated with that. So having a revenue stream related to that business to help offset those costs is, is in my mind, a direct correlation.
Mr. Grokka, do you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, if, if you allow retail and that's got control measures on it, does that mean at the same time you can disallow people, you know, buying and selling bags of marijuana on the street?
Yeah, my understanding is that'd be illegal. You know, you, you could actually give it away, but you can't, you couldn't, as a private person, I mean, it would still be illegal if you went out and sold a bag of marijuana today.
So the guy, say, cultivating in his backyard, that person is cultivating in their backyard for their own personal use, they can't then turn around and sell that to somebody else, regardless of whether it's a little baggie or, you know, a big brick?
That's correct. Again, they could give it away, but they cannot sell it.
So I have some of the same concerns I think Mr. Johnson does on retail. When I looked at this, I, I didn't have any problem, the ones I had the concern about were retail and micro-business. The other four, it just, to me, that's just regular business, you know, regular businesses. And I, just, I'll say ahead, I'm already, you know, I'm for manufacture, distribution, testing, or cultivation, if we want, if we want to do that. But the retail one of it, the one I worry about, as Mr. Johnson said too, is, it's the, it's not the, the actual marijuana itself, it's what the marijuana goes in. I mean, it's, 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 it's the brownies, it's the cookies, it's the chewing gum, it can be in everything and anything, and to go in, I just feel that that's going to be, we can't control it. I mean, again, nobody under 18 can do, I guess 18 is the year, right? Nobody, nobody under 18 can...
21.
21, I'm sorry. Nobody under 21 can actually buy it in the store, but, you know, you've got the brownies. I mean, they, they look like, they don't look like anything else. And of course, then, then it's the quality control of what's in there, because if we do allow some of these other things, we have to have really good quality control of what, how much THC and someone get into the, to the actual, you know, edible, so to speak.
My understanding is the California law requires that, having learned a lesson from, I think, Colorado, is that, you know, there, there has to be packaging, you know, that notification, proportion notification on packaging.
If we allow retail, and then after a few years of experimenting with it, we decide, the public decides, "Hey, this is not what we want in our community..." the public decides, hey, this is not what we want in our community, what recourse do we have at that point versus if we're, if we start in a more restrictive way, presumably we can allow, we can ease those restrictions later? Can you talk about sort of both ways of approaching that?
That's, you know, the staff approach in terms of the recommendation is, if you allow retail, you allow it in the most restrictive way. In other words, this competitive permit process, and, you know, one of the categories, you know, or one of the features of that permit would be periodic review, so that we could claw that permit back in the future, so that if it doesn't work out, the council can end it. You know, again, you want to be reasonable from a business perspective, not to have somebody, you know, come in and like a month later, you know, pull their permit because they've had a minor hiccup, as opposed to, well, if they came in and a month later they had a major hiccup, we would pull their permit, and, you know, they could be out however much they're out in terms of having invested in that business.
But as Mr. Johnson said, in three years, if we decide, everybody decides it's great to have retail, we can add it, too, right?
Exactly, yeah. You could always expand it. These are your local regulations, so you can dial them up or dial them back, and, you know, one thing we can be sure of is, over the next, you know, several years, there's gonna be plenty more state regulations that get put in place around this particular issue.
They would trump, they would trump our...
Yeah, if they were in competition, they typically trump us, but they may be, you know, regulations. I doubt the state wants to, you know, really start trying to trump us anytime soon in terms of our local land use on this particular issue.
Retail is what we're talking about. So, Mr. Olbert, what's your opinion on retail?
I stand by what I said before, which is that I have made up my mind on it. I could argue either way, so I'd like to see staff come back with some reasonable regulations, and at that point, decide whether we're actually gonna use them or not.
All right. Mr. Collins?
I'd like to, I'd like to consider it, although, one of the questions I have is, I think Jeff mentioned that there were, you know, some issues in Colorado that happened, but I thought I heard you mention something about Oregon. Oregon did not have some of the issues that Colorado had. I'd be interested to know why that is, if that's in fact what you said. Did Oregon pass regulations after Colorado?
I don't recall having said that, but...
The chief said it.
Oh, all right, maybe it was the chief that said it, okay.
Yeah, I know, you know, regulations, as one state, you know, learns lessons, and other states follow, there's been sort of a continual evolution of items that make it into the law being passed by voters.
So regardless of the source of the comment, I'd be interested to know, you know, what was going on with Oregon as it relates to retail sales, but my point is, yeah, I would like to consider, but I would like to get more information.
Mr. Johnson?
So I guess my starting point is that I don't think it's a great fit for our community, that this is a sort of a grand experiment, and that I would like to take a more cautious and conservative approach, that we could always add it in three, or four, or five, or six years, as we learn from the experiences of other communities, but I don't, I don't, it doesn't fit well in my mind with our community, and I'm willing to be persuaded otherwise, but that's sort of my starting point.
Mr. Grokot?
Ditto Cameron.
Yeah, and I'm ditto, ditto. So I'm, I'm just not, I just don't see the retail side of this personally. So I, you know, it looks like the pulse of it, that we don't want necessarily retail in San Carlos, at least three of us don't.
Can I, can I, you know, come back to the point I made earlier? Can we at least run this by whatever informal polling, quote-unquote, sources of information we have to test to see what the community actually thinks?
Yeah, you could, but I, well...
What's the harm in that?
None, except that I'm not sure what the, like, you see, you know, the scientific benefit, but yeah, I don't have a problem with running it by it, and sure, I don't have a problem with that. I'm not sure it'll change my mind, but I don't have a problem doing it. It just takes whatever it takes on the website to do.
Bay Monkey.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Fine, okay. All right, manufacturer. Manufacturer, so in other words, that's sort of the production, preparation, propagation, or compounding of marijuana, marijuana products, et cetera, et cetera. So, Mr. Collins, what do you think?
Manufacturing meaning a person growing it for their own business, or for a business purpose?
This is a business, this is a business, manufacturing business.
Yeah, I tend to be all right with that.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the only concern here, Chief, is that this is like, high-value, you know, potential source of, like, robberies or other things, but we have similar businesses like that in the community. Jewelry store.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Mr. Olbert?
Jeff, are we, or Greg, are we able to, as a condition of granting a permit or license or use or whatever in this area, are we able to require a level of security protocols for the business to follow?
I believe we would, under the ordinary zoning approval process for these, and our local licensing permit process, whatever it is, could also have those conditions.
I'm okay with it regardless, but I would personally prefer that we put some kind of strictures like that in the rules.
Yeah, it requires a minor use permit, so we could, through that process, do that.
So they have to demonstrate that, you know, they're not gonna create some enormous attractive nuisance.
All right, distribution. Mr. Olbert?
Same comment for me. I'm fine with it, with proviso, that we try and make it as safe as we can.
Mr. Collins?
Agreed.
Mr. Johnson?
Likewise.
Mr. Grokot?
Well, actually, it's just a comment, I don't understand how you have a manufacturing side of it, and don't have a distribute, what are you gonna do? Manufacture?
Well, no, I mean, there is a difference.
Well, yeah, I know, but, okay, so I'm fine with it, I guess.
I am. Distribution, I have no problem with. Okay, testing. Mr. Johnson?
I'm okay with testing.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Olbert?
Same comment as before, okay with it, with the...
Sure. Mr. Grokot?
Yes.
Okay. So are we, you guys are getting all the stuff we're going on here, Mr. Malpe?
Yes, we are.
Okay, cultivation. Mr. Johnson?
So can you, could somebody explain a little bit more what, like, an example of a cultivation business would be?
So cultivation's not allowed in San Carlos. There are no agricultural categories of our zoning, so that's why we're recommending against cultivation.
Okay, so then nursery, then we'll go to nurseries.
Nurseries.
And so a nursery would be a retail nursery, or it would be like a wholesale?
It would be a retail nursery. So think of, you know, Home Depot's nursery, if they got, again, they have to get a permit from the state and the city to be able to sell those projects, those products, but that would be a retail nursery.
So you could go to Home Depot and buy a marijuana plant?
Uh, yeah, immature, right, I mean, yeah, in theory. In theory, you'd be able to do that and go back to your backyard and plant it.
Basically, what you're saying, the distinction, there's nothing consumable here. You have to take it home and grow it yourself.
Correct.
And this year is essentially on the east side 600 feet from residential?
Yes.
Okay, I would be okay with that.
Okay, Mr. Olbert? Nursery?
I'm okay with it, same thing, again.
Sure, with the controls. Mr. Collins?
Yes, agreed.
Mr. Grokot?
Just with a question first. It says immature plants, and so how, does that mean we start to regulate and define what an immature plant is?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, basically, I think what we're, and planning can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we were just trying to describe the existing nursery regulations that were in place for the city in terms of selling, like, potted, you know, potted plants, as opposed to...
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm not very comfortable with it, just because if you get into distribution, it could bleed into things that we've just said we don't want, and so, not that, you know, forever would we...
You're certainly entitled to whatever thought you want. I think nursery's fine, I mean, immature plant, you're buying a plant that's this big, but it's gonna grow to that big, so, okay, so I guess nursery got the required consensus. And the last is microbusiness. Mr. Olbert?
Same thing.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Agreed.
Mr. Johnson?
So, just a clarification, so a microbusiness can have a retail component?
Yeah.
That's what I don't like, if you don't allow...
Yes, it can either have a retail component or not. So you can think of it really as sort of two categories, and I think we already understand where the council's coming from on the retail one, so I assume we're...
What's an example of a non-retail microbusiness?
Okay, so a non-retail microbusiness could have, could inside grow up to 10,000 square feet of plants, and let's say they can, you know...
And how is that not cultivation?
Put them together, well, it's the cultivation that's allowed in the city, as opposed to acres of...
Small-scale cultivation?
Right, small-scale. And so that's allowed, and so we would just be mirroring those land use policies, and then, you know, so you could grow it, you can put it together into a product, and you could sell it to another business, which couldn't retail, so unless, you know, unless you, as a council, allow that, and we've already been given direction to go back and do some community outreach on that issue.
And so does this, if we take the retail component off, does it raise any law enforcement concerns? Yeah.
Not the security, all of those other issues?
Okay. Do you, and do we anticipate that this is gonna be a big category in the state? Is, because we're gonna have all these sort of fly-by-night small entrepreneurs that want to... I'm just trying to understand, is this a rare thing, or is this the most common category?
I don't think we know. You know, I don't think we know yet. You know, obviously, it'll be more expensive than, you know, a larger commercial-type agricultural grow, you know, certainly we know that, so, you know, if Halfing Bay, for example, gets heavily into this, you know, in terms of having an ag category on the coast, I imagine that's gonna make it pretty hard for, you know, these microbusiness grows to be competitive, you know, but maybe like fine wine, you know, you see some, you know, little, small...
Boutique.
Boutique, right, you know, boutique, I don't know what you call them, weeteries, where they have some special, some special plant that they think is, you know, the next great product.
I already know the brand, they Black Mountain.
I'm gonna pass on this one and see how my colleagues feel.
Mr. Grokot, what's your thoughts on this, any?
Well, given all the other things, but, yeah. I have to throw out, just, you know, we've gone through all these, but I am really troubled with even, I know the state, you know, the voters did what they did, but it really troubles me that there's still this, you know, there's federal laws that prohibit this, and we're defying all of that, so...
Well, the whole state is, not just...
Yeah, I know, but...
I agree. There's gonna be some issues coming down the pike. If you separate the retail out of it, then I, microbusiness would be fine with me, I mean, to make up some rules.
Yeah, if I could take one more run at Cameron, we didn't see any difference between that and manufacturing.
Yeah, I hear ya. So I lean that way, too.
So staff has direction, is there, what else does staff need?
I'll just just a look at it.
I think, I think the final sort of part of the presentation for us to get some feedback from the council tonight is just on taxes. So, obviously, you know, to the extent that we have businesses, and even if you don't have retail component here, if you're having business-to-business activity happen in town, you have the ability to pass a local tax on this, an excise tax, and that's, you know, that's what pretty much all the other cities that are considering these regulations are looking at, the counties looking at, in unincorporated county areas, and so this would be probably just a general tax that you would put on the 2018 ballot that would, you know, allow voters to pass an excise tax of what seems to be most commonly proposed, is up to 10%. And that would be a local tax that would be collected and brought here to the city's general...
Mr. Johnson, what do you think about that?
I'm sort of undecided about it. Do you think, do you think that this is a revenue opportunity for the city, based on how we're talking?
I think it certainly has that potential.
The tax rate today would be zero, unless the voters approve it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, sales tax, right? I mean, on...
There's no retail.
Yeah, if there's no retail component, yeah, so it could be zero without special tax.
And talk to me about the timing. This is just to get it on as soon as possible, and...
Yeah, I mean, the timing, in our mind, it would have to be, it has to be council election to do tax measure, so 2018 or 2020 would be your opportunities, and just because this issue is, you know, in the front of the public's mind right now, and if, assuming, you know, the council allows any of these business activities to come forward, you know, it seems, seems like, you know, the folks in town ought to have the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to tax that business for the purpose of their own local services.
And sorry to ask so many questions about this, but would you consider this as a separate council item that we would talk to about as we got close to a campaign, and would you...
Absolutely, and, you know, I mean, we just kind of want to put it on your radar, so, I mean, I don't think on this particular issue, we need opinions even tonight on it. We just want to put it on your radar. I wouldn't envision the council would be involved in a campaign or anything like this.
And would be general fund revenue, or would be earmarked for something specifically?
Well, I think you'd probably want to do this, typically, this would be done as a general tax for general fund purposes, it would require 50-plus-1% vote of the people to pass it, it requires 2/3 if you dedicate it to something specifically, and not typically how community would go about adopting an excise tax on something like marijuana.
All right, so we have time to discuss this one, okay. Can I ask you a quick, you know, I just thought of something on all these businesses. I know if you go to a retail, it's gotta be cash. Is all the, does business-to-business have to be cash also?
It may, it may have to be, because of the, the federal regulations of the banks, it's not clear right now what they can do.
But at this point, we think it's, so all the, every transaction, no matter where it is, is gonna probably be cash.
There are some financial institutions that are starting to move in the direction, state-chartered credit unions are one, so...
Okay, we don't know, anyway. So how about fees? Is that the same thing as taxes? We can talk about that in another...
We can talk about that down the road, yeah, and our approach, just to give you an idea, would be to just charge the same, same type of fee recovery for these permits as we would for any other permit in the city.
Okay. Then internal actions, best practices, do we need, just, I would assume we would follow staff recommendations, management program, land use policies?
I saw most of, Mr. Chair, I saw most of that as actually sort of Jeff just informing us what he was thinking of working out, I mean, that's execution, that's not the policy.
Right, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to, if there's something on there that hits somebody. Mr. Malpe, what else do we need to do here?
I think you've given us great direction tonight, I think we made a lot of progress. You know, I feel like we've got enough now to go forward and begin working on this, and, you know, we'll do a little bit more research for the council on the retail component, so that'll be the, sort of the one study session-type item we might bring back to you for further discussion. The rest of it, we'll actually start working on the regulations so that we can try to get them, you know, it's gonna take us a while before we can bring those back to you for actual consideration.
Any other comments on this item?
I have one, yeah. So one thing that's just been kind of going through my mind is that, something Cameron said about the fact that, yes, San Carlos passed this with 65% of the vote, I'm kind of wondering what the voter was thinking. I mean, if you put something for him before me, and I say, yeah, yeah, we ought to legalize it, but then the different question is, okay, well, how about in our town? So we're having all this discussion about, you know, all these details, and I like the idea, I really like the idea of doing something, Shape San Carlos type of approach, but at some point along the way, I'd feel real uncomfortable if we didn't somehow bring the public more into the discussion. There's not a single member of the public, there's just staff here tonight, and it's, I would like the people of this town to know, well, we're talking, yeah, 65% of you approved it, but now, you know, did you really understand that we're talking about putting these businesses in this town? And I'd like, I would like to have a process by which... I have one, yeah. So one thing that's just been kind of going through my mind is that something Cameron said about the fact that, yes, San Carlos passed this with 65% of the vote. I'm kind of wondering what the voter was thinking. I mean, if you put something for him before me and I say, yeah, yeah, we ought to legalize it, but then the different question is, okay, well, how about in our town? So we're having all this discussion about, you know, all these details, and I like the idea, I really like the idea of doing something, shapes San Carlos type of approach, but at some point along the way, I'd feel real uncomfortable if we didn't somehow bring the public more into the discussion. There's not a single member of the public, there's just staff here tonight, and it's, I would like the people of this town to know, well, we're talking, yeah, you, 65% of you approved it, but now we, you know, did you really understand that we're talking about putting these businesses in this town? And I'd like, I would like to have a process by which there are at least 50 people in the audience, I realize that, you know, people who are concerned about whatever come to talk to us, but I would like to engage the public in some substantive way so that we have better input. I don't want to be making this decision in a vacuum.
Right. We'll do our best, but, you know, as is the case on issues that don't really generate a lot of public concern, you're not going to get a lot of public comment, and we haven't on this. I mean, I haven't got a single email, a single telephone call. We had one person come up to us at the farmer's market and talk about this. You know, we had one member of the public, you know, at the last meeting that wants to open a business.
Well, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but I want to be able to say, hey, look, you had your chance.
If I could make a suggestion that maybe, I know normally the press calls us, but maybe we could call the press and say, this is what we talked about, in case you didn't hear about it, this is all these different items, so at least it gets out into the newspaper and stuff like that. Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, partially in reaction to what Ron was saying, Ron, it could be that nobody cares. It could also be, it could also be like we have definitely seen with general plan stuff, is that nobody cares when it's there at the time, and then when the hotel gets built next to them, they come in and scream at us and go, what the hell did you do that for? Right? Well, we had a whole process, and we did the outreach, and still not going to know.
We need to do a lot of public.
One, one specific suggestion, however, for staff in addition to the outreach to media, I would definitely, given some of the comments that were made here, I would definitely do outreach as well to the San Carlos School District and to the Sequoia Union High School District, and through them, go to the PTAs and whatnot, those groups, and say, hey, look, this topic is under discussion. Way in if you want to weigh in.
Right.
Okay.
Good. Okay, we'll move on to number 11, council communications and announcements. Mr. Olbert?
In deference to the fact that we seem to be trying to finish the meeting off quickly, I have nothing to say.
No, I am. Mr. Collins?
I don't have any tonight.
Mr. Johnson?
So one item that I wanted to let you guys know about is, a year ago, we were approved for a $1 million grant by the Transportation Authority to fund the Holly 101 pedestrian and bicycle bridge over crossing. That grant had a one-year time limit associated with it. That one-year time limit came due. We were able to get an extension at the last Transportation Authority Board meeting for an additional year. So we're kind of now on the clock. I know Jay has gone home, but we've got, we've still got our $1 million, but we need to, we need to think about spending it in the next year if we want to hold on to it, so.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
Well, I guess I'll use up everybody's time that they.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Grocott.
I have a number of things I wanted to bring up. The first one is, there's been a fair amount of discussion that I've seen on different sites, social media sites and so forth, regarding the Trump administration holding back the funds on electrification, and that's, you know, raised concerns, and people have said, well, gosh, we got to have that, and that's what we should be doing, and I've seen a few people, though, including myself, put up comments about, hey, there's other solutions, and maybe we shouldn't be looking at the electrification because of the overhead that's required and so forth. And actually, last time we talked about this, Cameron raised this issue about hybrid diesel, and then I've heard also about another kind of diesel, I think it's called Level 4 diesel or something, but it's a different kind of diesel. I wanted to see if the council has any interest in us discussing this issue and maybe putting out a recommendation by our city that we would like to look at other alternatives. It seems to me it's a good point to reconsider this whole issue about whether we should be doing electrification or doing something else that's less costly and less, causes less problems for our communities.
Well, if I could respond, I went to, and actually Bob was there too, the Access San Carlos meeting last Friday, and Jerry Hill was the speaker, and he talked about the new gas tax coming, and it's going to raise, I forget how much it is, was it $25 billion?
5.2 billion a year.
5.2 billion a year. One of the questions I asked him specifically was, if the $647 million that we were supposed to get from the federal government does not come through, what does he think the odds are that the, there would be enough money coming from the gas tax to fund that gap? And he thought that he, that they would make it happen if the federal money wasn't coming through. Now, as far as whether we, you know, consider alternate sources of power on Caltrain, I don't mind having the discussion, but, you know, for, no pun intended, the train's left the station on that one. You know, this electrification is so far along that, and it is so close to being, we're actually talking about putting in the polls. I mean, they were supposed to be starting last month, so, and I, if it can be integrated into what's happening, I don't mind having the discussion, but I'm not sure that we're at the point where we should be talking about a completely different direction unless it turns out that there is no funding at all that's going to happen, and this is, again, sorry for the other pun, but stopped in its tracks, so.
If I, just briefly, Matt, what I would say is, I'm a huge proponent of electrification. The, what the electrification gets you is trains that can accelerate faster and decelerate faster, which means you get more passengers that can ride it. So if you stick with the same diesel system, you don't get any increase in capacity, and so you don't get a reduction in traffic. So the big, the big benefit with electrification is the benefit you get to the whole 101 corridor, which is you get people out of their cars and you reduce traffic, so I think it's the way we got to go.
I think electrification is, well, it's beyond, quite honestly, I'm sure they looked at a lot of different things, so, but I think the Caltrain or Caltrain Board and Sam, whatever it is, what's, is it a Caltrain Board? I can't remember all the Caltrans and Caltrain, but, yeah, I wouldn't, I think that, as you said, the train left the station. Mr. Olbert, comment or not?
No, I agree that electrification is, if it happens, is going to be the more desirable outcome. I did, Matt's comment, though, did spark something else I want to bring up, and I'll let him finish his comments before I ask you.
Mr. Grocott?
So the other item I had here was San Francisco Airport Roundtable. I went to the last meeting, and it's frustrating, they're trying to work with the FAA on the change of the paths of planes arriving, and that's been over a year, and they still are no further along, doesn't seem like. But one of the things I noticed by also, while I was sitting at the meeting and, you know, listening to a lot of things going on, I started looking back in the packet at the complaint history in San Carlos, and there's not a lot, there's about, it varies month to month, about four to eight people who register complaints with the airport noise abatement office, and so I have a question for the council or for the mayor. It seems to me that there's, it's about the same four to eight people. Perhaps we, as a, the mayor, or if he want to have me do it as the person who's on Airport Roundtable, reach out to these individuals and find out what are the, usually, it's a single noise occurrence that causes people to complain, and maybe it would be prudent upon us to get in touch with these people and find out exactly what the nature of their complaints are, and if there's any, see if there's anything that we can do as a city in working with the airport.
Well, I thoroughly appreciate it if you would. It would help me a lot if you would do that. That's fine, I don't see any problem with reaching out and finding out. I've sat on that, I've gone for you sometimes. It's arguably the most frustrating thing that I've ever done in 12 years, is sit on the Airport Roundtable. I recommend it to anybody who needs to have patience. It's just absolutely unbelievable, because the FAA is like this god, it's like a federal judge, they're like God, and they just don't want to move, but that would be great if you could do that. I just had a couple of things, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
So just quickly, I brought up Edgewood Road before. I thank you for writing the letter and sending it. I know we haven't gotten any response from the county. I noticed that the county is spending money to build new office buildings. Still doesn't seem to be anything in their budget for Edgewood Road, and I just wanted to make publicly a notation to the county that right now, as you travel down Edgewood Road, on the, on the shoulder, there's a number of places where there's piles of rocks, and with spring coming on, there's more and more bicycles, bicyclists who use Edgewood and come in, come down that, and it's unsafe, and the county needs to do something about it, so.
On that point, Mr. Malpey, could, we write letters a lot of times to different places and different things. Is there a way to follow up on that or talk to, let's say, a deputy, deputy county manager, Mr. Callagie, or somebody, or Jim Porter, or somebody?
Yeah, we'll reach out to Jim Porter.
Okay, and if you need me to, you know, I know Jim very well, and if there's anything I can do to help, that would be good. So we'll follow up on that, because I drive the same road.
Yeah. And my last thing is, I want to see if the council would have any interest in this. I talked to the chief about our parking enforcement officers and even just the deputies in general, spending time giving people tickets for expired tags, and I was asking the chief, do we get anything for that? Because like with a parking ticket, we get some of the revenue. Turns out, we get nothing from that, and so I'm wondering if we might want to do a resolution that would direct the officers who work in our city to overlook those, because, and I also talked to the sergeant, Steve, who, you know, manages that part of the department, and to find out, you know, are we, do the officers have, can they overlook that kind of thing and not be in violation of any kind of law or anything from the state? And he said, yeah, it's totally a call on their part, but I wanted to see if the council had any interest in us passing a resolution instructing our department to not enforce that, because we're not getting anything for it.
I, normally, I'd be right there, but I think, oh, the chief is gone, so I can't even speak to him, but I know sometimes that they do that, and because, believe it or not, sometimes it leads to something else. And that, I see Mr. Malpey nodding his head.
That's what I was going to say.
You know, otherwise, I'd agree with you, but I think sometimes there's some solution, or some extended things, believe it or not, it's just like the taillight. It's, believe it or not, sometimes the taillight leads to something, a bigger thing, so I wouldn't necessarily want to, unless I consulted with the chief, and who isn't here unfortunately, I thought he would be, to get a little more on it, but I'd be happy.
I wanted to see if we want to have it as a discussion, you know.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll, let me talk to the chief and see what his opinion is, and I'll bring it back, and then we'll see if we want to have a discussion on it. Okay. I just have two things. Actually, Mr. Grocott and I met with the mayor of a Honduran city, the second largest city in Honduras, yeah, San Pedro Sula, is the second largest city in Honduras. We had lunch with him, and some of his staff, they were up in this area, they were here for the soccer match a few weeks ago with the US, and he gave us some beautiful, a little tin here, and three beautiful, or four beautiful little, I don't know what you'd call it, little pictures of areas in Honduras. So I'm going to have, Crystal, either, we either have a place to put them in the city hall, or we'll give them to the historical museum to put up.
If only, I also have a couple of items that they gave to me, and I put them in my truck and need to get them back here, so there's a couple more items to go with that.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Malpey, staff comments on city administrative business?
Actually, I believe someone, I remember, had a comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Olbert.
Actually, two now. After you talk to the chief, Mr. Mayor, before we bring back that item for discussion, are you going to check to see if there's a third member of the dais who wants to have it agendized?
Yeah, absolutely. But I wanted to talk to the chief first, because I thought that was.
Wasn't sure to swap the check.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
The issue I wanted to bring up for my colleagues to consider discussing at some point in the not-too-distant future, you have undoubtedly seen the rollout of the passing track proposal for high-speed rail that basically would put passing tracks right through the heart of San Carlos, which is something we always knew was a distinct possibility if the high-speed rail project ever goes through to completion. It seems to me that we probably ought to start spending some time thinking about, number one, what our reaction to that is, and number two, depending upon what our reaction to it is, what we want to do, because the sooner, you know, there is advantage to getting started on certain things sooner rather than later. So I bring that up just for maybe we do a strategic planning discussion or what have you, but we really need to talk about it.
I would, I would like to, if we could have somebody on staff talk to, I don't know who, whether it's Jim Hartnett or whomever, that might be able to get some information on any specifics.
Yeah, through the chair.
I think I could report on that at a future meeting. I'm familiar with where things stand, especially on the passing tracks.
All right, good.
As I recall, though, didn't we send a letter before, a while back, expressing our desire that the passing tracks not come through San Carlos? I thought we did that a couple of years.
Yeah, we've spent, many letters have been sent over the years on this particular issue.
I don't want to have any discussion again.
We can provide counsel with a more detailed update at a future meeting, to the extent you want to get into, you know, a legal discussion about, you know, the future of this item or negotiations, then we could even put a closed-session item on.
Okay, great. So now, staff, administrative business.
Nothing's even, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And is anything else? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.